Do you take attendance?
You do take attendance.
Yeah, I can take attendance. Which is good. Alright, got it. So I guess we should start show. What is about seven oh three or something like that? Seven oh four. Okay, so we're calling this meeting together. It is a me- meeting with liaisons from the Board of Finance and Town Council focusing on public works. And in attendance, we have Judy. Yes?
Present.
Mark?
I am present.
Hillary?
Present.
Tom?
Present.
Present.
Both Toms Butterworth and Schultz and Penny Young?
Yep, yeah.
And I think Christine Ross was invited as well. I don't see her here yet. And Mike Morrow, I believe. Right? So those two aren't here. Hopefully they'll join. And Tiger as well. So I think what we'll do is just let Tiger be our emcee and walk us through what he's proposing for next year's was it two twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget? I can't believe I'm saying twenty-two and twenty-three like it's no big deal. And everybody should have received the backup PDF spreadsheets that Tiger put together for sewer, public works, and public works capital. So Tiger, take it away.
Thank you. Well, thanks for, you know, meeting for our first go. We did meet with the Board of Selectmen this morning. Took about an hour and a half in total, forty-five minutes for operating, forty-five minutes for capital. I'll try to bring you up to speed as to what questions they had. They didn't have many since they were aware of many of the projects already, but you know, as we roll through, if you've got a question, just ask it. Don't wait. Just ask me while we're there. So we don't have to backtrack and I'll just answer as we go. Sure. No, she doesn't want to roll, right? One second. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay.
Tried to have it where I could have everybody on the screen and do it and it didn't seem to like it. So this is us. This is a work chart of the DPW and everyone, men and women involved. We are fifty-eight strong, fifty-five full-time employees, three part-time employees. We have two part-timers in the Parks Department and one part-time tree warden. Put over eight separate divisions. We run through administration, engineering, town buildings, waste management, which is divided up into sewer department and the transfer station. Highway Department has basically two subdivisions, the road ma- maintenance portion and fleet management. And then we have got our parks and our tree warden or our tree service. So all in, this is everybody of the night. You'll see them because mostly everyone will be there today. I just don't like to call them out twice. It was a long weekend. We got called out probably four times over the weekend, which is never a good thing. It just stayed with snow and then wouldn't turn back over to rain when it wanted to. And then we had to come out and then eventually, you know, it started to cooperate. But so I've been stressing on this for about, well, a month or more, but for the past four days, because the numbers for me are higher than I've ever had. But we're in unprecedented times based upon what we're being asked to do. The complaints that we get, the requests that we get, the amount of work that we're asked to perform. Basically across the board, it's a it's different than it was twenty years ago. I'll be perfectly honest with you, the clientele, the residents are much different than they were back then. And we've been asked and tasked to do more and basically taking into consideration the requests and the complaints and the multitude of complaints are what where they are and the problems that we see out there. We had to put together a budget that was reflective of that. So for fifteen years, I've been doing it since two thousand and seven. So two thousand and seven to now sixteen years, I had a two percent budget or less. And this year I'm at six point six one percent. And then we'll run through every department. You got a question on each one. I'll tell you exactly where we stand and why. And then we can go forward from there. But I can tell you that even with it, it was still, it's still lean. With that. So this is a grab of sure.
Can I ask you a question just back there? When I was looking just the trend lines with, can you go back a page with the administration? I mean, it's have stuff, stuff been classified in different places because?
So what what you have is what we had at back in nineteen twenty twenty-one. My town engineer salary was inside there. So prior when Mike was the, when Mike was the director, I was the assistant director, we were both in the administrative side, right? So then I went about a year after I got, after I took over at the helm, we went for about a year and a half without a town engineer. So there's no reason to change the the configuration, right? So then, so that's why you see engineering is low and now it's an engineering pops up to three forty-seven, three sixty. And administration goes down, right? It was low, then it came up, then it comes back down again, right? Because the the town engineer moved into.
Put those two together for the trend.
Put those two together, yeah. And when I show you the graphs, I actually show them together because then you'll see if you take away the high and the low, we're at one flat line across the board. So I usually look at them as an entire entity. And you know, it's a, it's a six hundred and ninety thousand dollar request, six hundred and eight thousand dollar request for the two combined. You know, but yeah.
And Jimmy's replacement is included or is that still part?
Why still? No, I still, I still carry the salary line for Jimmy. Yeah, what we're doing is we're actually paying Jimmy on a part-time basis.
Yeah.
And I, I pulled the money off the full-time line to pay in the part-time line because at the time that Jimmy wants to retire, I'm going to have to hire back at that part-time, at that full-time line. So the thought is not to reduce that line, but to just make a transfer throughout the year into the part-time salaries line to cover Jimmy's salary as we move forward. And the unfortunate thing is that my chief operating officer, Nick Colabella, who was slated to take Jimmy's slot probably this July one, just was diagnosed with rectal cancer, colon cancer. So he's got some other problems going on that he's got to take care of. So Jimmy's going to come back on a full-time basis while Nick goes through treatment. And then we'll try to look at transitioning again if Nick is able to continue what we, so right now we're in a kind of a holding pattern because of healthcare. The only good side is that Jimmy's a class four, which is the highest permit level you can have for a wastewater treatment operator. So he can manage and he's, the DEP has no problem with him working that through. So staying.
As long as he'll do it.
Yes, I'm trying to, to be honest with you. That's why he's been here, you know, and working in a part-time basis for a while. It's been working quite well. It's just, you know, unfortunate that Nick wound up, you know, getting ill. So we'll see. So this gives you our trend lines over the, since fiscal ten to twenty-three, it's about the only thing that'll fit on the screen. The, and it shows each department and you can see that relatively we're flat across the board. For most of it, the highest one here or the largest one is the highway department. But if I, the only thing that gave me pause or gave me the way to sleep last night was the fact that when I overlaid inflation, cost of, you know, CPI index over time. We actually, the majority of our departments overall and our, and our trend overall is an entire department, our divisions in our department are actually below what, what the cost of living increases would be. And it gives you an idea of just the two snippets at fiscal ten, the highway was at two point six five million. And if, and the commensurate rate for inflation was a two point five, I took two point five eight, I took a two point five million dollar rate at fiscal seven, moved it forward and into fiscal ten highway was a two point six five and then the inflation was a two point five eight. Then I carried that at that point in time to the end, see exactly where we were through the entire course of what budgets I've been doing since oh seven. And then they actually transpose where inflation is the, it would be three point five five million and the highways at three point six, three point three six. So the interesting thing is that inflation grew higher. If you look at the delta between the two, inflation grew higher than we did by about four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars. So you know, over that course of that time, we've actually been less than the rate by quite a lot. So I was happy to see that that gave me, you know, that we were staying at a, at a nice evenly paced rate throughout the past ten, thirteen years or so. So that kind of tells you where we're at. And then I looked at something different, just that, you know, look at the price of a Big Mac, right? Price of a Big Mac in nineteen eighty-six was, you know, two dollars and fifty cents. And if you look at, you know, what it should be, it was a buck fifty, now it's about two fifty, you know, in that timeframe. But the actual, if you looked at the CPI, but the actual price of a Big Mac is now five sixty-seven. So it went from a buck fifty to five sixty-seven during that timeframe when the CPI, you know, relatively changed, didn't change that much or changed by a dollar. So it told me that I was right because our materials are going up, our outside contractors are going up, our, you know, supplies are going, our equipment costs are going up and our, our replacement parts are going up. John Howe had a, had a, we bought a, we bought a mower, six foot mower several years ago that cost us ninety thousand dollars. And in one year's time, it went from ninety thousand dollars to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand because new emission standards and new steel and, and, and the other design parameters that were placed upon it and the cost of steel and the cost of material. So it changed by forty-seven thousand dollars. It went up nearly half, you know. So that, that kind of gives you the pressure that we're under to try to maintain the services that we have that we've been giving to the town for this number of years and that the expectation is there, right? We've set the bar, in my opinion, very, very high. And we need to maintain that status because if not, the phone's going to ring and people are going to be upset and the, you know, when the the calls don't come to me, the calls go to Kevin, right? And then they come down to me. And if I say no at my level, the phone immediately rings like Kevin's level. So I actually have to walk up the stairs and say, I just said no to this resident while the phone rings in his office. So that's really where it stands. And given the the pressures that we're under and the requests that we're having, that's what we're seeing. So this gives you a breakdown of how our budget pans out as far as our breakdown from salaries, utilities, tree service, what have you. And you'll see that fiscal twenty-three line, that's all of our salaries down to our total budget for the year of eleven point six million. The percentage change is I did the exact same thing in fiscal twenty-one. When fiscal twenty-one, our salaries made up about fifty-two percent, little over fifty-two percent of our overall budget. We've, that's dropped and our, we've seen an increase in the outside contractors, like I mentioned, the supplies that I mentioned by three percent by the supplies and our outside contractors by a little over a percentage point, but you can see the movement one way or another, as far as what's actually costing us more money by just taking a look at it. So our, our staffing is our, our salaries are actually less than half of what we, what we of what we, our overall budget request. So that kind of gives you.
Salaries and benefits or just salaries?
Salaries and benefits. That's, that's every line. That's, that's salary, hard time, overtime, benefits, anything you could throw in there. Longevity, social security, everything, salary and benefits across the board.
Tiger, is the outside contractor increase, is that due to the sheer number of projects that you just completely, you simply can't staff them?
Or is it? No, this is, this is just.
It's so complex that you need someone special.
It's both. It's, it runs into, a lot of it runs into timing and it depends upon what it is, right? So for our buildings department, we, we just have a maintenance guy who walks around, checks all the buildings, makes sure they're, they're stocked with supplies, does minor repairs, but he's not an electrician or plumber. We hire that out completely. So for, for them, all the outside contractor line, that's all the plumbers and electricians that we're hiring out, safer buildings, because it's a, it's a, we don't have any in-staff electricians or plumbers. Then our grass treatments are serviced out just due to timing. And then we have other things for, you know, when, when we're asked to do spring cleanup, we're in the middle of spring cleanup in all the parks and trying to get the baseball fields and the soccer fields ready, right? And we're at, we're being asked to prep every single school and every single property. We can't do it. So we actually have to hire out for that week-long push to get everything done and popped. So it looks nice. We have to hire out. So that's what, that's what you're seeing. So it's not, you know, our guys can do it. I just don't have enough men to do it, right? And it's, you know, and instead of hiring, we're hiring on the outside to go and do it. And it's been working for quite a long time, but that's really, and it's not, um, nothing has increased in volume. You know, we haven't added programs. This is, there's no added programs into this budget at all, as far as, you know, it's just what we've been doing, what we're good at and, and what the costs we're seeing going forward. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So if we, if we delve into everything together. So you look Amy here, it's, this answers your question, right? So the brown line's the admin line, the purple line is the engineering line. If you take them together, it's pretty much straight across the board. It's a straight line, you know, if I take the two together. So that's really as far as those two departments to go forward. Basically, I had a, I had a glitch in my budget last year. I had a thousand dollars for overtime for my administrative assistant. She's part of the town hall union and she is paid hourly. She's the only one in my staff that's been paid hourly. And she's caused to stay late, come early, you know, to, to coordinate the apartments that she actually has to help run. So she does the invoicing, the purchase orders and the billing for the highway department, parks department, tree service. She assists the buildings and then does the conservation commission and a couple of others. Get about a couple of others that are on the outside, you came to EMS. So I needed a little bit extra overtime for her. I was trending at nine thousand dollars a year. And I had a thousand dollars in the budget. So I was understated in that budget. So that's all it is, an eight thousand dollar increase into that line item. To then make me commence through with our normal spending for the year. So that winds up being a two point eight percent increase year over year. On the engineering side, I've got, I did an analysis of all of my supervisors across the board from highway all the way down through engineering. And other salaries have been trending over time and how we look in the outside world as far as how do we look in Darien, Ridgefield. You know, our, our, our groups, Avon, I looked at Farmington, looked at those and my senior engineer was actually underpaid. And he's doing a fantastic job. He's covering multiple projects and, and I value his opinion and his work. So I wanted to give him a bump of five thousand dollars. So that's the difference right there. And Kevin agreed at the time that we met during our budget, he actually mentioned it before I got a chance to say it. So that's that, there is a change with, along with a couple of other small changes in the line on itself. But that gives me a one point nine nine five percent increase based upon, you know, the size of the budget itself. If I go to town buildings, the town buildings line, this is, this number, this one two seven zero is overstated, there was a glitch in the in the budget itself. They had a forty-nine thousand dollar line item for our voice and data, should have been around two thousand dollars. It's about forty-seven thousand dollar change right there. So that brings it down to about one, two, two, three. Which brings him closer in line to his budget from the year prior. At least a little closer. And then what we did is we consolidated, we had been tracking the town hall annex and having a separate budget for those lines ever since we acquired it. So it's been about four or five years just to see exactly how much it was costing. Board of Finance had asked that request and then Kevin this year asked us to consolidate the two so that there's another forty thousand dollars inside that line item that, inside this budget that we necessarily had on the outside. So that budget gets nullified or brought down to zero and the monies get rolled over into here. So if I take another forty thousand dollars off the top or forty-five thousand dollars off the top, I'm at one, one, eight, oh. We versus a one oh five oh. So I'm at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar change. And really what it comes down to is every year in the January, February timeframe, we're coming back to you for an increase in our budget line for buildings, for our outside contractor line or, or our professional services lines, based upon how we're trending with repairs and, and costs. That coupled with the fact that we took over some property cleaning of Waveney. Divine Cottage itself is back up and running. So we have that. And we have, so we added some property cleaning there and some other additional work that, that's been, that's been tasked to the department. Cause these lines to, to rise. And that's really, that's where you see the change. So I tried to take out the fact that we, you know, we come back every January. I don't want to come back for a special appropriation. I just want to be budgeted initially. And then budgeted correctly. So I took a three-year average for the past three years looking at it. And based upon those lines, that's the number we put in. Based upon, that's the money we're spending to try to maintain the buildings that we have. But I didn't want the budget to be understated and then come back for a special appropriation. I just wanted the budget to be stated proper from the beginning.
Hey Tiger, explain the town building, the, this steep rise from fourteen through nineteen. Do we add stuff there?
Yes. What, we started off, when Bill took over, the budget line for town buildings was around eighty thousand dollars, okay? Whole, you know, back, way back when we had no money in town buildings and it was spread across all the departments. So then Bill came in and then we started to consolidate. So now we have centralized services. We have a centralized supply section. We have all the fire alarms are run through one account instead of having separate accounts for every single fire alarm in every single building with the police department having their own fire alarm service, fire department having their own fire alarm service, Lavum Center, Waveney, you know, house. We started to consolidate everything. The cleaning, we started to consolidate property repair and maintenance. But that's why you see this kind of jump through and then we, you know, then, you know, you, we took over the town hall annex. There's, there's money there now for that, right? That's that last bump.
Yeah, but that's, that's the only actual building addition. The rest is that it used to be scattered through budgets and we brought.
And we just keep bringing it, yes, closer and closer. So now, now we, you know, are, we have one fire alarm service, right? So I only have one call to make, right? You know, that kind of thing. It, it matters at that point in time. So now we, and then we bid out complete. Sorry, Tom, you had a question?
I was just going to say, and so that consolidation from other parts in the budget into this one line item that was achieved somewhere around seventeen, eighteen, nineteen?
It's been throughout. Yeah. So that, that rise from fourteen through seventeen was when we started to consolidate everything through. We had a, the budget director was helping us pull monies across and then so we would, we would be managing it in their department. And then the managers of those departments were saying, listen, you're spending my money, right? And if we went over on the line, they're getting, they're getting upset because we're messing up their budget. We said, okay, we'll take that, those lines back. Your budget goes to zero. We'll give you a small amount. Every, so the police department has a small line for property repair and maintenance. That's for if Leon wants to paint an office, he wants to buy some furniture, you know, whatever the manager of that building. But we control the, the larger aspects. So the cleaning contract, when we're bringing in contractors to work in there, we have, you know. So now we've got a much better system going forward. And that's why it's choppy, right? So it's been very choppy. Throughout, we're getting close to now, we're we're pretty much all consolidated down into one. And there's, there's one answer. And that's why I also tried to get his budget to where it would be, you know, where it should be. And then I can then say, this is your budget. We're done. We're not going back for a special appropriation. You've got it already. And you need to manage within your numbers. And then we can, then I can get it, you know, and keep everything within the box, so to speak. That's really, that's really the thought. I don't like coming back in January. I don't like stressing in January, February that I have work to do and that I need to come back and ask for money. I don't think it's fair. To anyone at that point. So, and then to give you an idea, the utility lines have been increasing. So I, I did this chart out to show you, we purchased the diesel, the gas and the fuel oil for all departments in town, including the BOE. And we work with an energy consultant, Bill does it primarily. And the trending line, the blue lines are what we bought at and the orange or red line is what the price was in Connecticut at that time, the average. So we go, what we bought, the average price in Connecticut. So we have won all except for two years there, fifteen, sixteen. There was a little bit of a glitch throughout that. And we purchased a little bit out of cycle. So those are the only two years we had a problem. And I just don't have twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three years yet. They're waiting for those to come in. But overall, we've been doing a very good job of being under on, on our projections. So when we project that our utilities are going up, they're going to be going up. And we know, we have an energy consultant that we work with, his name is Constellation Energy does a fantastic job helping us pre-buy our electricity for a number of years out. And then we're looking, you know, and then we typically pre-buy our fuel oil and our gas and our diesel. Right now, the numbers are so bad that we're not, we're actually going off of a rack price because the numbers are so high, we're hoping to come back down again. Because if we buy now, it won't be in our best interest. So for short term, we're looking at, we're, we're rack pricing it now. And then eventually, once we see everything start to slow down again and calm down, so to speak, we'll then, we'll then start purchasing again for the entire year, usually by in June, we buy our fuel oil for the year. So we know, it's actually one year out. So we actually know budgeting what we're going to have. And then our gas and diesel, we buy in the December, January timeframe, because that's the best time to buy that for a year out as well. And our electricity, we bought, purchased for multi-years going forward on a larger package. And we have still one more year left in that contract. But that just gives you an idea of how we're managing those numbers. And I think overall, we've been doing a very nice job trying to, you know, we start trend lines are, are very good. So then if I go to the highway department, highway department has a modest increase, two point two percent, seventy-two thousand dollars. I've got some increase in my salary lines based upon where we are as far as men jumping either a grade or a step throughout. And then the majority of the changes in utilities for the highway department itself, I do have one increase of fifteen thousand dollars in our outside contractor line. That is our snow removal line. We use that for snow removal and we typically budget for one snow removal per year out of the downtown area. It costs about fifteen thousand dollars per time that we call them out. And I budgeted for two this year because we've been using two every single year. And I've been having to rob money to try to find that, to go for that extra call. So this year, I said, why are we, why are we killing ourselves having to rob money from other places to then do what we need to do to service the downtown and clean up the snows to the businesses and, you know, the residents and get around to the businesses without having any problems with any slip, trip or fall. And a fifteen thousand dollar bump in that to get the snow out, that's one slip. It's one trip and fall that I, that I don't have to get sued for. And that's probably, it's usually the starting point is fifteen thousand dollars for anyone who slips and falls and wants to sue the town. So am I going too fast, Amy, or am I good?
Oh, we're fine.
Okay, alright. Sorry, I'm, I'm trying, I'm just looking, I, I, you know, trying to see what we can do. So the transfer station, sixty thousand dollar change, three point seven percent. Basically, I have changes in two of the line items. Recycling and bulky waste, we both have a twenty thousand dollar increase because both of their contracts are due June thirty. They're up June thirty. And where, this is what we're anticipating going forward in the coming years. So I, I don't know yet. It's a shot in the dark, but we know that we're going to be paying more. So we put in an additional amount of money in both. And then we have some smaller, not smaller increases throughout the, the rest of the budget. I can tell you that the our numbers overall are now decreasing after the COVID wave. We, we typically do about sixty-two hundred tons of garbage a year. In nineteen, we were at three thousand seventy-five for the, the first six months of the year. And in twenty, we were at thirty-four hundred, thirty-seven hundred tons. And now we're at thirty-four hundred tons for the first six months of the year. So we can see that through nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, we're starting to come back down to our normal number. The interesting thing that we don't get credit for is that when, when garbage comes in from a hauler, we charge that, we charge a tipping fee for them to dump on our floor. And it's actually slightly higher than what we are charged to actually transfer back out again at the city carding or actually to to our, our, our hauling contractor then take it away. So we're actually making money on the whole thing. We have a six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar line item for revenue that is, that offsets six hundred thousand dollars of expenses.
Yeah, I mean, I would say Tiger, at least if history's a god, in prior budgets, we, you have taken the opportunity to remind the audience when you're presenting on some of these, that you, you know, that hey, you should just know that because of tipping fees and other things, you know, permit, you know, whatever, that, you know, revenue is actually up at a transfer station where you're asking for a three point seven percent increase.
Correct. Thank you. Yeah. But that's exactly it. And then as, as that, as that contract rolls and it increases, we increase our tipping fee. Commensurate. So we try to stay just a little bit above where we're at. So we don't want to, you know, we don't want to kind of gouge anybody, but we, we, we definitely want to recoup our costs. And then a little bit to cover some of our overhead to actually have the men standing there, you know, and moving the, moving the material from bin to bin.
To make sure, I know we went through this last year, Tom. I just want to make sure. So in your budget now, rather than go to the general fund, you are showing a revenue line item, right?
We show, we show the revenue line item. Yeah, I don't get it.
This is the net change, this is the net after your.
No, it's not.
No.
No, this is the, this is because the revenue is completely separate. So there's, there's a revenue line of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that you'll see, you know, when we go forward, but that goes into the general funds to offset these expenses, but it's not a net. So recreation has the same thing. Anything that they bring in goes to, goes to the general fund. So it, it can be used to offset these expenses, but you know, in the overall terms of the budget, but it's not, we don't, it's not a net for us. This is, these are our expenses.
Yeah. And, and just, just like the same way that you, it's very helpful, I think, to have this inflation line to set the conversation into context.
Yes.
You know, we, at least in prior budgets, Amy, if I remember correctly, it was always helpful to bring this sort of audience and the listener up to speed saying, oh, by the way, you know, this isn't just increased cost, increased cost, you know, we're, we're running this, you know, project and it doesn't, you know, for lack of a better phrase, it does have a P and L, right?
Correct. Yeah. I, I have a, I have a separate, you know, spreadsheet on that exact, you know, with a, I just didn't put it in here, but I might put it in here for the next ones to show where we are as far as what we charge and then what we're paying out, right? So it shows this line going forward of how we trend to be above the line, so to speak, of what we're paying. You know, each time. And, and so we, we wind up increasing our fees once every three years, once every four years commensurate with the contract that we have. Uh, and then run forward from there. So, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna make sure you put that in. Make sure.
Yeah, just a note, just a note to yourself, you know, that, oh, hey, you know, slide forty-two, you'll see, you know, or whatever it is. But just a note to, as, as you present this, cause it's very helpful to me anyway.
Well, thank you.
Tiger, cause we talked about this again last year and I pull my notes, but what was the net change after the revenue?
The, well, the, i- it, it's right now, my revenue, revenue line is six hundred and twenty-five thousand. So you'd have to just drop those two down and um, recycling, we don't get, we don't get much money. We don't get much money at all. A lot of the recycling lines for us are, are um, small, small change, like thirty thousand dollars. And bulky waste. Uh, we uh, we do charge the residents across the scale for anything over three hundred pounds. Um.
Yeah.
So, but it's at, it's at the rate that we're paying on the way out. So we're giving away three hundred tons for free um, each time. But you know, our, our um, our sticker fee, we've got two thousand people, I think it's two thousand seven hundred and fifty stickers sold so far this year. So that at the, it's either at a forty-five dollar rate or seventy-five dollar rate, forty-five, if you have a hauler, seventy-five, if you don't, because forty-five, we're not, we're not handling your garbage. We are handling your garbage, but through your hauler. And it's actually less expensive for us because we're being, we're, you know, they're paying to dump, um, whereas a resident isn't. Uh, and it's usually, the trending is about thirty percent, thirty-three percent of people who have a hauler get a sticker and about sixty-seven percent of people who get a sticker don't have a hauler. That's really where it stands. So sixty-seven percent of the people are paying seventy-five bucks and thirty-three percent of the people are paying forty-five dollars.
It's a how we compare up downs? Have we, when we look at this again, is the contract for another?
We look, we look every year at our fees. I've actually got to put together a fee memo for the board selection for next uh, week. We don't look to change our fees right now. The um, our surrounding towns, some of our surrounding towns, Wilton does a pay as you throw, right? Two dollars and fifty cents a bag. You gotta buy a bag that has the Wilton seal on it. That's what you can bring to the, the transfer station and throw out. Wow. Yeah. That's, that's hard. Cause you have to, you have to sit there and say, sorry, sir, that garbage bag isn't a Wilton bag. You've gotta go home and bring back a Wilton bag. Um, I don't, I don't necessarily wanna get into that in our, you know, and then Darian does, where, Darian charges everyone a hundred and twenty dollars across the board and everything else is free. We could go to that route because that's very close to what um, your garbage is, right? So everyone dumps about a ton and a half of garbage a year. We're paying about eighty-eight dollars a ton. So eighty-eight, forty-four, you're at a hundred and thirty-two bucks or something like that. Um, so it's close to what you're dumping for the year that Darian has to take out. But that jumped a hundred and twenty, we proposed it a couple of times and the selectmen are not in favor of going that route yet. Will they be in favor of increasing the seventy-five to eighty or eighty-five? Quite possibly, but that'll be a discussion for them. But right now it's a seventy-five, forty-five. Um, and then uh, we allow um, anyone to come in to use the station if it's for recycling. Um, and then uh, and for bulky waste. So that's, that's.
Just, just good to review. Yeah.
Yep. All right. Uh, any other questions on the transfer station? All right. Thank you. The um, so the next is parks maintenance. Um. Here we have a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar change, what we've got going on. Um, so here, just so you understand the graph, cause I, I changed the graph for the parks department. Um, the blue line at the bottom is actually the rate of inflation and we, we've exceeded the rate of inflation for the parks department. It's probably the only department that does. But somewhere in here, we, we added a park and then we added a man to try to make up for the fact that we added a park. We're supposed to add two men. We're hoping to add that second man this year. Um, and the usage of our parks and the demands on our parks are quite high. So I, I, I didn't expect us to trend um, with the rate of inflation, expected us to be a little bit higher. Um, so we have a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar change. What that entails is, um, it's basically a lot of our supplies are getting hammered. Feed went up by forty percent. Um, fertilizer went up by seventeen percent. So we're looking at going for outside grass treatments for like to, to go through and take care of um, the areas that are not turf. Um, some of the areas we oversee twice because they don't get fertilizer. So, you know, the Saks field, since they don't get fertilizer, uh, since they don't get pesticide treatments, they have, we actually have to do those more than we have to do other fields. Um, so we were looking at there, we were looking at the increase was marketed for just those separate lines. Um, we also took over um, monies that probably should be a commensurate drop in the recreation side because we're starting to pull things that should have always been on the parks maintenance side into, uh, it's from recreation into parks maintenance. So twenty-four thousand dollars for work in and around Waviney House, we now have in our budget. We uh, inside our budget, we weren't ever responsible for Dunning Stadium. We're responsible for Dunning Stadium now, based upon the new MOU with the NCIF. So we've got a twelve thousand five hundred dollar line item in there for, um, just for Dunning, for maintenance of Dunning itself. So there's quite a, some push and pull, so to speak, um, on that, that's, that's driving those, those uh, particular line items up and driving the budget itself upward. But you'll see, like I said, you could pull twenty-four thousand dollars or more out of the recreation budget because it's now in the parks department. But I, I don't know um, exactly who paid for Dunning at the time. I think it was the Booster Club, but um, now we're responsible. Cause it's twenty-three thousand dollars a year for electricity for the lights, you know, that, that we're responsible for now.
Um, yeah, Dunning, Dunning, you pay it self.
What?
It, 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 it used to be paid, um, if through the special Dunning.
Right.
You know, enterprise fund, yeah.
It's not now. So that, you know, and then, you know, now we're, you know, we, we've uh, uh, we have additional work getting around the house. The conservancy comes in and beautifies it. We put in irrigation and now we're paying for the water, for the irrigation, for the, you know, that's another bump by six, seven thousand dollars for water for the year, just to irrigate in front of Waviney House. So there, there are a lot of pressures um, on the parks department itself as a whole. Um, and in here we have our change from um, a part-time guy to a full-time guy. We had a part-time line for the guy. It's worked out very, very well. We've um, been able to tackle a lot more things with the, with the additional manpower. It was working so well that John had asked for the halftime guy to go to full-time and then another part-time guy. And I said, let's chew it one at a time. So let's see what happens with the part-time guy going to full-time and then we'll see if we need additional help. But he's been able to accomplish more.
This is the, the last year when we recommended a full-time person, but we ended up compromising half-time, half-person.
Yeah, I didn't take the full-time guy. I took the halftime guy. I got a lot of.
Well, for full-time, man.
My guys didn't give me, uh, my guys are not happy, but I, I felt it was the right move, to be honest with you. I didn't think that it was, I wanted to test the water and see exactly what it was before I hired somebody and then have to say, listen, it's not working out. I don't wanna do that. And I don't wanna spend good money after bad. So like, you know, I, I appreciated it immensely, you know, but I still felt that I'm gonna take that time guy and see. And we were right. It works and it does work. And we're seeing you know, what we're able to do, some of our lines, you know, that um, during a snowstorm with an additional guy, I don't necessarily have to hire sometime, hire some additional snow shovelers because now I've got the extra guy, whereas I, before I didn't, you know. Um, you know, right now, you know, with um, we're, we're taking over Waviney as far as the snow removal and things of that nature at Waviney. Um, because Steve is unable to, to, to help at present. So we're uh, we're taking that over and that's basically what's gonna happen after he retires, right? So when he retires, we're gonna have to take over that line share. So it's a good thing for us to start now and see exactly how much it's costing us and having the additional manpower is helping. So like, I can say that, that, that the test worked, you know, as far as.
Basically, that, so there's a record, there's a re-categorization of stuff from rack that's coming over. You have the inflation and all the supplies. There's a little bit of, there's more to maintain because of some recent improvements that require you to have, I don't know, increased utilities or whatnot. You, you said you had an additional park come online?
Well, at the time, when you see how parks raised up, we, you know, we, we've got Irwin, right? We didn't have Irwin. So we got Irwin just off the grass and then, you know.
Right, not, not.
Right. So historically that, yeah. So that's um, and then.
And how about Bristol? Is Bristol adding to the, the workflow as well?
It's uh, right now, not necessarily because we're still building through it, you know, like we're still, you know, and um, but the maintenance, when it's all done, yes, it will be because the, there, there is no maintenance side on the conservation commission. That's gonna fall to uh, the parks department. And once we beautify it, we know that we're gonna have to maintain it, right? So we hired that, we hired a part-timer to work in and around Waviney House. I could see him either be expanding his hours to work in other parks or get someone else maybe to help at Bristo and maybe somebody to help at me, very similar to what he's doing at Waviney. He's a test case to see exactly how well it's working and it's been working quite well. So we're kinda, you know, gonna go forward from there, you know?
Good. Uh, Tiger, two things. Uh, where's the line that shows what you are inheriting from Steve's operating and his?
It's actually, it's not a, it's not a one line. It's a, it's, you'll, you'll see the outside contractor line, you know, that's primarily where it is. So it's twenty-four thousand dollars in that outside contractor line.
Oh, it's that.
Bumping up. Right. So yeah, because he was, he was hiring out to go and do it. We're taking it over. We're probably gonna have to do the exact same thing. Um, to stay, stay with it because we, we don't have the manpower to spread that way. We, we can't do all the town buildings and Waviney. So we're looking at um, spreading that out across the board. This past snowstorm, we took care of Waviney. So Steve knew that the town forces were taking care of Waviney, but then we needed additional help at the town hall and Vine Cottage. So we had to hire out to take care of that. Snow removal at Vine Cottage and, and uh, town hall.
You know, Tiger, to make this chart more um, user-friendly, I don't know, if, if you have a chance, maybe pop a little box in the bottom in asterisk, the parks and say, you know, additional uh, expanded parks. You know, Irwin, Waviney.
Yeah, I can put some tags in there just to show exactly where, you know.
Yeah. So you're not making this up.
Yeah. And then, you know, and just so you know, the, the red line is actually, that's the funding of the library. Because my parks superintendent can't stand the fact that the library gets funded more than him every year. So I just threw that in there. That's all I had was fiscal eighteen through twenty-three.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need the two, the two groups fighting each other. They're.
No, I'm gonna take it out. If the, it was there, just so you see, I didn't take it out yet, but that just gives you an idea of exactly where, you know, where we are in the hierarchy. You know, so it's, it's wrong and it's probable. We, you know, I, I'm gonna take it out with worth finance. I don't wanna fight.
I'm not picking children. I'm not saying favorite.
It's all good with me. I don't care. You give any, you give money wherever you wanna give it. We'll work through it. I don't, I, I don't have that. I don't have that, that feeling.
Tiger, it's probably worth noting here though, that with the addition of the half of this person to full-time, we are where we voted in a referendum in oh-six for the purchase of Irwin Park that was included in the referendum. And here we are over fifteen years later and we're finally at, back to what was agreed upon by the community. We've added Bristo, Waviney Park Conservancy. Irwin is up and running. Waviney has exploded. Beet Park is hugely improved upon. Kuanis as well. Um, you know, we have to be reasonable here. This is, you know, eh, maybe we're making up for it in the outside contractors to a degree, but we really have not increased that line. I mean, that's just remarkable, long time stagnant number.
I don't think you're even at what it was, what was promised. Correct this. Wasn't it? Good.
When the guy goes, when the guy goes from full-time, when this guy moves up, I think I'm gonna be, I think I'm full at that point.
Okay.
Um, I think it, I, I, it depends because we did make a move where I, I brought in an assistant superintendent, right? So I brought a guy up from the, from the ranks into an assistant superintendent range.
That's right.
We necessarily didn't replace him. I'm sort of replacing him now. So I still might be on my overall number, I'm probably same, but the number of actual, you know, I, I, cause Todd works, but the number of workers, you know, the number of laborers, I think I'll still down, be down by one. Yeah, if you, because we, because we had an assistant superintendent, which I fully support. John can't do it alone because he's, he's one guy. So when he goes to a meeting with somebody, I've got, I've got eleven, twelve guys out working with no supervision, which I need another person. I need another set of eyes. Um, watching.
The tree contractors in here, right? Two, the con, outside contractors include the tree.
No, no, tree service is separate.
I will do that.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna get to that in a couple of minutes. Tiger, parks, sorry Christina.
I, I just want a clarification. When you said that we're taking over Dunning Field and uh, the care of it, where does the income driven by the leases get attributed to?
Uh, I believe that the leases go to the NCIF and then they have two pockets of money. They, they have a, they have a fifty percent of everything that they take in goes towards uh, tre, uh, turf replacement fund. And then fifty percent goes towards their projects moving forward and their executive director costs and their overhead that they have. I, I think that they're coming to you tomorrow night, uh, to the council tomorrow night to actually give a presentation. And that, and I think that Mike Benamato will be mentioning exactly that. I think it's a fifty-fifty for everything that, every time it's leased out and monies that is made, that, that's how, that's how it's split up.
Yeah, I think that's right. That's, that's what.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's working fine. It's working well, you know, um, Bobby Rushton's doing a nice job. Um, bringing everything forward. COVID's killing them a little bit, you know, they weren't able to do Field Fest this year, but they um, but they're still um, seeing an increase in their revenues and increase in use.
So my question is, with regards to the lighting expenses, we're picking up the entire tab. They're not responsible for anything. What about the soccer fields and all that?
No. So the maintenance lines are all on us. They receive the revenue. And then either put it towards a new future project going forward or bank it towards a replacement project. We, we, we don't really, we, we don't have a bank account. The, the town really, we can't necessarily, it's our general fund is our bank account. Um.
But it, but in the past, the, the leasers, let's say, would pay the utility separately than the user fees.
No, no. In the past, they, everything was collected from our stand through the Booster Club. Um, and it was running with Jay Egan and then he paid, he paid the fees from what he, what he received from leases went towards paying the expenses of Dunning. We, that, 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 we don't have that anymore.
But are we coming out even to the arrangements that we had in the past or, or are expenses just increasing?
Well, uh, you know, I, I guess you'd have to say that I, I believe that they're bringing in more money than the prior model. That's, that'd be a question for the NCIF, but I believe they're bringing in more money than the prior models. So the town as a whole is receiving more money. Yeah, expenses are rising. We know that just because, you know, utilities are gonna go up, our, our, you know, electrical bill's gonna go up by three to five percent at a minimum.
Well, for example.
They're bringing in more money. So I can't say anything.
One of the expenses was in renting the generators to provide the prop-up lights in the fields. Are we still gonna do that or are we going to plan to have some light fixtures put in so that there is no excess?
Talking on the, on the, what, well, so yeah, you also have, so the soccer association rents lights for their use of, of the fields. Steve has two lights that himself. We are looking at trying to either replace those or buy two additional ones so that we have additional lighting on our side that we could utilize. Um, but soccer association itself, we don't rent, we have some in our possession that we utilize and the soccer association rents the others if they need, if they need lights on certain fields. So if you're looking at the um, uh, the farm road fields, which are in front of the track, between the track and farm road, those lights that are there, those are rented by the soccer association themselves, not by the town.
Maybe we should do a cost analysis of what it would save us uh, in terms of installing more permanent fixtures?
We can. It's just then everyone's gotta wanna do it. I mean, I, you know, I've got a line item in John's capital side for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for replacing the Dunning Stadium lights. They're, they're, you know, they're original. And um, they're non LED. So we're looking to put in LEDs and then um, some of the poles are leaning. And the requirements now, the code has changed. Uh, you know, you know that from wind loads and things like that. All that has changed from the time that they were put in. So now if we looked at it on a code by code basis, they would not be code compliant. We could, we wouldn't be able to put those poles in now. So we're looking at replacing those. Um, one, because they're almost at their useful life or beyond their useful life. Two, because they're leaning and three, because we can change over to LEDs. In our best interest to change over and then we'll probably see a, a, a good payback on that, on that number, a, a good drop on that twenty-three thousand dollars that we're paying for Dunning itself. Um, to drop, I, you know, I, I don't know exactly what, but there's gonna be a savings. Um, to drop, I, you know, I, I don't know exactly what, but there's gonna be a savings.
It might be worthwhile to look into if there are any savings and stolen.
I have no problem. I, I did ask Steve exactly how much the Soccer Association was renting the lights for. Just to give an idea as to how much would be versus buying some additional ones and what that would cost. So he's, uh, he's, he's getting those numbers back from the Soccer Association and then we can make that determination. So that, yeah, the, um, at that point in time, if, if it's costing him enough where, whereby you could buy the unit in five years, why are we renting? You know, just buy, you know, the payback is less than eight years. Yeah, it's a, it's a good investment at that point in time. So, but that's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
I, what's the, yeah, I, I, I'll just reach back out to Steve again and see if he's gotten that number back. Yeah. Any other questions on the parks?
Hey Tiger, just, uh, maybe I missed this, but the.
Right.
The spreadsheet that you sent, that Amy sent us.
Yep.
It has B O S requests, um, there's an eighty thousand difference between what's here. Did I, did you mention?
Yeah, so what, what happened was there was a glitch, um.
Okay, that, that's.
Yeah, I had, yeah, I had, um.
Say no more.
We originally, yeah, it's, it's, it, yeah, it's basically taken up the, the difference in that part-time guy moving to full-time. Everything, everything got removed in, instead of actually jumping, instead of jumping the guy up, they removed all the numbers and then, so that's an eighty thousand dollar change. So. That's exactly what happened. It's sixty-five, sixty-five thousand for the guy and fifteen thousand for the part-time gardener that we hired. This past year for Waviney and that's, that's what happened is round eighty. The good pickup, because Kathleen Corbett had the same question and it, and it took a moment for me to realize exactly what it was, but that's, that's the eighty.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, the, uh, the Nature Center, we're looking at a seventy-five thousand dollars. We pay for the water, um, the electricity and the fuel oil across the board for, uh, for them. And, uh, we're looking at what we see for our numbers going forward. Um, these are what we feel we, we're gonna be, um, the commensurate jump in the, in, um, each line item. We've got a five percent jump in, um, in our, uh, electricity line item and, um, we've got a market jump inside our, uh, fuel oil and propane. But, uh, this is what we feel what we're gonna need going forward. Um, I'm hoping that that number will come down a little bit because it is quite high, you know, that one, that one fuel oil line, but I'm, I'm hoping that that'll come down, but I, I won't know. Right now, we're, uh, we're taking the price that we're currently buying and running it forward for the next, you know, twelve months to say exactly what it would be because we don't. It's too hard right now to predict and, and our energy consultants are saying, don't buy right now. It's gonna change and it's gonna change markedly. So waited for a little bit. Um, so that's, that's the problem that we have is just trying to forecast what that number will be. So you, you'll, it's quite a jump.
Do you suspect Tiger that you'll hear back from your consultant before you present to us?
We ask him all the time, but no, he's, he's told us to hold. So as we go forward, I think that these will be the numbers that we're gonna present to you and hold with. Unfortunately, that I, we won't be looking at it. Wait, where we wanna buy. He's, he, when, when there's a, when there is a market price change, he is on the phone with us immediately and then asking, you know, and then. Our, our protocol is that, uh, Bill receives a call, he gets a call, he comes to me, we go to Kevin and. Now, uh, Ann Kelly Lenz, our new CFO, she started today. And we sit and discuss what the ramifications are, how much the buy would be and whether or not we wanna, wanna, you know, go forward with the purchase. So there's about three, four people that take a look at it before we say yes to the purchase. Um, and then we get, we get approval from the, from the first selectmen and the, and the CFO before we make a purchase like that. It's a, it's.
So if he's saying, if he's saying to sit tight right now, you, that, if, if he's correct, then these numbers get better?
In other words. Yeah, I think that the numbers will get better. Yeah, because we're at a high.
You're, you're budgeting, you're budgeting based on what current market data will tell you it's gonna cost today at prevailing prices. But you have a consultant saying, sit tight, don't make any big purchases because we think we can do better.
Exactly. That's exactly it. Thank you. It, it, it was very succinct and it was perfect. So yes, that's.
He's good at that, you know?
We're, and, and Tiger, Tiger, we're just referring to. Utilities, fuel, uh, et cetera. I mean.
Yeah. Right, we buy, we buy across the board for the entire town and the B O E. So we buy electricity and fuel for both.
Right, just, I just wanna make sure it doesn't, it's not applying to other things.
Is the, is the reduction reflecting the solar?
Um, you know, the solar, it's a, that's a, it's, it's difficult for us to quantify, right? Because we are seeing, you know, we see the meter, right? We see that we're, we're generating solar, right? So what we're seeing is basically that, um. Our electricity, our electrical demand will probably go down, has gone down, but the numbers for electricity are going up. So you can't really see inside that. You won't see a savings because the number is still gonna be higher than what we're saving. You follow me on that, right? So we're not, we're not, right now, we haven't taken anything off the grid yet. We're getting, we're gonna be close with the C H P at Lapham. We have the possibility, the potential to take Lapham off the grid, right? So we wouldn't have any electrical charge. It would just be our gas, but we're, we're still a little young on our, our numbers.
According to. But the forty thousand dollar drop from fourteen to twenty-one, so about a hundred down to sixty. Um, he's wondering what set attribute, because we haven't changed the number of buildings or anything, is it?
No, the, we had additional line items in there, like an outside contractor line, and we consolidated those down into Bill's side. So that's why you're seeing. Those numbers drop back. So we took, instead of having outside contractors on that side, we brought it all back into centralized services. So it's not just underneath the nature center. It's elsewhere. We have other work that we need to do that, from a landlord standpoint. So that's what you're, that's, um, the line items there that you're seeing the change. It's not all electrical savings. You know, we have, we have solar on one of the buildings there right now. Um, and we'll see, that one's basically off the grid because it's so small. But, uh, the savings that we're seeing doesn't necessarily cause it to show you a negative in the, in the line item.
All right, so this, this.
The only thing we have.
Line items, not just the utilities and the early, earlier, there's other services.
There was other, there was other things inside there. You've got to look at around sixteen, seventeen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, see where the change was.
All right, so this one's a little, it, it's just confusing, you know, uh.
Yeah, it should be flat. Relative, it should be very, very flat because we've been very good with our fuel and our, and our pricing, as I showed you prior, we're actually pretty good with it. Um, but, yeah, the, the, the only building that we actually have really good data on right now is the Police Department. Because they've been on gas for over a year. So we actually saw savings, um, there. Um, in the difference in price between fuel, oil and gas. So we saw savings at the Police Department. So we're hoping that we're gonna see the exact same thing as the other buildings are converted over. Our Parks Department got converted over. We're hoping for a savings, to see a savings there. Um. The police is an easy one because it's a twenty-four seven building. So it's, you know, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We don't have to worry about setting the building back. The building's always open. It's an easy way to track. It's easiest building to track. The rest of them, as you set back. You know, you're, you're going and usage sporadic gets a little bit different. Even the Parks Department, if the guys aren't there on Saturday, Sunday, the building's set back, that's fine. If I gotta call them in on a Saturday or Sunday and I spike the building. Then you're gonna see a difference in the, in the fuel, in the, in the utility costs there. But it's a little bit harder. Yeah.
Didn't the schools change over to gas?
The schools are on gas, yeah, yeah.
Isn't that showing up?
I don't have, the, the B O E's on the B O E side, you know, I don't have any money for the B O E. I don't, these are all just town buildings, town owned buildings, not school buildings.
So the only thing that you carry for the schools is the gasoline, the fuel?
I don't carry, no, I don't carry anything for them. I buy for them. They, you know.
Oh, they put it in their budget.
They put it in their budget and we buy, yeah, we buy as a, as a, as a, as a, as a group, as a block, because it's a.
Okay.
Much more cost effective for us to buy as a block, but their budget carries all of their costs. I carry no.
Okay, got it.
Sorry about that. The, um. All right, the, uh, after the Nature Center, it's a town utilities, this is, um. Basically our hydrant service, streetlights and our sewer service. So sewer service, we pay ourselves for the use of our sewer for each one of our buildings, based upon the sewer usage fee that's, that's calculated at the Board of Finance level. Um, and then we pay for, um, we pay a fee per hydrant and then we pay a fee for. The size of the water line going and the age of that water line going to service that hydrant, right? Because you could necessarily bring a water line into service a building at a two inch line, but. For fire service to that building, you need an eight inch line. So that upgrade in that line, we actually have to pay back and it's the way that the utility, Aquarian, we, we. Makes back their money for a utility upgrade. So we, we'll see this line jump a little bit. We've added some hydrants. When they, when, each time they come in for a water main replacement, I meet with a, a fire marshal and the fire chief. And the fire chief meets with some of his, uh, lieutenants and captains. And they say, hey, we'd like to have an additional hydrant here. We'd like to have something here. Um, so we added several hydrants in the Mortimer Breakeroff. Locations when we did water main there and then when they redid the water main in front of, uh, Town Hall, um, we put one in front of Vine Cottage. At the request of the Fire Department. So you'll see, you know, that's, it's three hundred dollars per annum, but it's still three hundred bucks per hydrant. Um, and then the size of the line increased and the, in the age of the line, you know, decreased, right? So we'll, we'll see a commensurate bump in some of our line items for that. We basically are leasing each thing from the, from either from EverSource Electric or from Aquarian itself. We have about four hundred and eight streetlights in town and we lease them, um. And they take care of the electricity for that light and the maintenance thereof. So if that light fails or falls or breaks, they, they, they take care of all that. So, um. I think it's a, it's an easy out. But right now it's a fifteen thousand dollar change, about three percent, and we're looking at just the, what they're telling us out there is that water will go up by about three percent or electricity will go up. Um, things of that nature. So then the, uh, the next is tree service. Um, the tree service line, we're, we're still trying to get back to our. Our apex, our apex was somewhere in the seven, eight, nine range. We were at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For tree service, uh, running back to when I first started back in late nineties.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we were five fifty, that was our number. And then through the years, it's dropped and now we're trying to come back based upon the requests that we're getting. The requests for service, the number of tree calls that we're receiving and then, um, additional calls for service from. The Conservancy from, uh, the Garden Club and the Beautification League, things of that nature for either tree removal, tree planting, tree maintenance. So this ninety thousand dollar change, I, I increased the highway service line by, I believe it was, um, fifty or sixty thousand dollars. The, uh, Parks line by, I think it was twenty-five or thirty-five, and then the outside tree maintenance line by fifteen, that came up to the ninety. I think it was, it might've been fifty, twenty-five and fifteen, uh, were the three. Um, and those, the tree maintenance line can be utilized from anything from pruning to planting. So that line, if we use, if that increase in fifteen thousand dollars could be just solely for tree planting, buying the trees and then our highway department plants them. At no cost to the tree service budget because they're already being budgeted, you know, they're already being paid underneath a different, uh, department. So, but this is just based upon the, the rate of service calls, the number of service calls and every year we're having a curb Bob somewhere in the April, May, June range. We're curbing him and saying, you, you can, you got one more bid in you because that's all the money you got left. Um, and we're hoping that the wind doesn't blow at that point in time because if the wind blows at that point in time, we're, he's, he's out of money. Um, but the calls don't, don't stop at that point in time. The calls are still coming in and responsibility is if it's a bad tree, I gotta take it down. Um, so that's, that's really where we're at.
Tiger, just as a add-on here, you might look at, because it was the beginning of oh-four. That we added the hundred and fifty thousand in the first, my first budget in office. And so it's actually, it's actually less than that because it was way back. You're starting with ten.
Yeah. I'll have to see if I can research it back, you know.
Yeah.
Right now, like, yeah, my hard records go back to oh-seven, you know?
Right.
Um, because that's when I started, that's when I started doing the budget, but. Um, I'll look and see if I can find something back that far.
Even more of the significant difference and, and it was cut back, totally back, if not more during the recession. It's never been added to. So you're, you're probably still. That, that's where.
Yeah, I've been at the four hundred thousand dollar range. You can see it at, you know, either three ninety-four, four hundred, four oh eight. Uh, I'm from sixteen forward, or actually from thirteen forward.
Yeah, so.
That, that's number four hundred.
Yeah, it's more significant.
Hey. Penny, Penny Mark and Christina, do you guys remember we, in the ARPA money? Did, did that get approved in our first? Cause we, that was one of the line items we had.
There was, no, there was no trees that got approved in that, but Kevin mentioned that today.
Yeah, so there's a source to help out, yeah.
Yeah, he was gonna look towards that. It's a, it's not supposed to go towards maintenance, but it could go towards planting, right? So, yeah, that could be, that could be part of it, but.
But I think you can go to maintenance if it's safety issues. I think if it's a safety thing, it can go, but whatever. I'm not saying that this should be reduced. I'm not saying this should be reduced, but there may be other funds that can help us move along on this one. So that would be good.
Yeah, he, he mentioned that today, uh, as, he gave that to Tucker as a marker for, you know, for, for the next look of, um, what we're doing. Look at that. So, you know, yeah.
The idea, the idea was to beautify the town and to replace some of the lost trees along West or O and L Bridge or some of the major streets. It wasn't meant for the maintenance. It was meant to just plant the seeds.
Right, we're also, yeah, we're also looking at, you know, the, Bob tries to replant where he can, you know, there's sometimes. Those trees that were lost, like on West Road, it's unfortunate because the power lines, you know, butchered them all. Um, but we are working right now with the Beautification League on trying to, um, bring back phase, what they call phase two. I guess along South Avenue was phase one. So they started in the town center and worked down South Avenue, but they only got as far as Bank Street. And the phase two would be from Bank Street to get to Farm Road. So we're working right now with them on trying to bring that plan forward. Unfortunately, it's a state road and I gotta get approval from the state to do it, but we're, we're, uh, it's been a longstanding request from the, the Beautification League and I'd like to see that. You know, so that we can then, eh, eh, continue to beautify that, that, uh, the gateway into town, right? I, you know, I constantly keep looking at the, every time, where, where you're entering town from, from out of town and trying to make sure that those look better. Um, we're.
Tiger, I don't know, I don't know if it's possible, but I think that if you offer to the homeowners to have trees planted, if they buy them. Um, they would be subsidized by the homeowner and it would alleviate.
Try. You know.
But move this much faster forward.
Yeah, I just, it's, it's, it's not a bad idea. Just that, you know, the, it always comes down to when the resident, when the one resident in the middle says no, right? Then, then I get a no problem, but hopefully everyone would say yes. And at that point, you're right, it's a, it's a win-win, right? They're, I'm planting it for you. You buy the tree, I'm planting it for you. This is our list of trees that we'd like to see. I, from what I understand, they had a really nice plan developed. So I, I, I'd like to see it come to fruition and, um, you know, so. We're gonna, we're gonna push forward with it. Hopefully we'll get it done.
But they're gonna want their tree, not your tree.
Quite possibly, yeah. I mean, there's a whole, what I understand, there was a whole design laid out and the only tree that I, I said that they can't replant is a catalpa. Cause we had too many complaints on the catalpas that were planted. I don't know if you've ever seen a catalpa tree, but the, uh, the seed pods are about this long and they drop. Constantly. And then the, the homeowners are caused to have to, you know, take care of a long time. So that was the only tree that actually, it's beautiful, but it just.
Too much maintenance, yeah.
Too much maintenance, yeah, yeah. I, I had a resident call me every year for about five years in a row. Constantly, and you gotta come here and please pick up the catalpa leaves for the seed pods. Um, the, uh, so going forward, the, um, the Town Hall Annex, you'll see it was at forty thousand dollars last year. We dropped it to zero because we consolidated that in. We, we have a full-time tenant, you know, with the help, you know, human services is in there. She's gonna be there for forever, probably. So, um, there's no reason why she wouldn't get rolled into the, the Town Hall complex that we have. So we, we rolled those numbers in and that was why, one of the reasons why Bill's number, you saw that at a forty thousand, you know, part of that increase was forty thousand dollars from just managing the, uh, Town Hall Annex. So. And here we do receive revenue, just, um, so it's a different line, right? It's a rentals line. We receive revenue from the, from the. Um, the Dance Academy above that, uh, goes into the general fund. Yeah, and then lastly is our wastewater plant. Uh, if you look at it, he's almost perfect with the rate of inflation. I gotta give him credit. Jimmy's done a fantastic job. Um, yeah, he's been here, uh, forty years or so, um, and we have. Two lines that are, that, um, are outside contractor lines, a grit removal line and it speaks for itself. Um, as the, as a, as a, as a sewage comes in, um, there's a, there's a chamber that it goes through that. Removes all the larger solids and, um, anything else that might've, that somebody might've flushed down the toilet that, that shouldn't have been flushed down the toilet. Um, if you wanna find a ring, it's the best, per, perfect place to find it, right there. So anytime somebody flushes a, a ring down the toilet, that's the first place we go. Let's give you a little background information. The, um, and then our.
How many's that happened?
So, you know, yeah, in, in case you were curious, you know, and then, uh, the outside sludge hauling line, um, we're, we're looking at.
Hey Tiger, I'm missing two wedding bands. Just let me know if you find them.
I, you go down to look at the treatment plant, every single one of those guys has gold rings on. You, you gotta find out, that's exactly. I, you go down to look at the treatment plant, every single one of those guys has gold rings on. You, you gotta find out where, that's exactly where they got them. That's, you know. I'll ask, see, hey, did you find them? Did you find a girl?
If you've got two wedding bands.
Yeah, that, that too, that's a problem, right?
It's not the sludge. He's a good therapist.
Yeah.
Tiger, just to segue on the sewer department, has there been any progress on adding houses to the matrix?
It's uh, slow. I, I'll give you that. It's, it's in my court. Um, I have, um, I have. Um, our admin from, one of our admins from the building department researching back all the board of finance minutes. Um, and the town council minutes, because the town council accepts the street or the finance handles the sewer, sewer department or the. Sewer system itself as far as being the water pushing control authority. But she's researching both to find out when, um. Kelly Green or Orchard Drive or Selig Place were actually added to our road network. You know, you know, the council actually accepted the road and to find out what the board of finance actually said during that time, right? So, and uh, the system was created prior. And at the time, they were just undeveloped lots, all undeveloped land. And I think that, and owned by. Some very prominent people in town. And I think at the time, they were saying, I don't need to be inside the sewer system because it's sewer district. Because I'm, I don't wanna pay taxes on a, on a vacant piece of land that I'm not gonna develop yet, right? I agree, I, I, I'm only, it's conjecture, but I believe that's probably what happened was, so then when it finally got accepted. Houses were built with septic systems, the septic systems were fine. They were adequate at the time. They might've been perfect, but they were adequate. And uh, and now we're fifty years later and running into a problem. The interesting thing of it all is that when I researched the charter, the um. Uh, it's one of my duties or responsibilities or, you know, one of the things that falls to the public works directors, I can place. I can call for the installation of a sewer line there as part of our work. The only thing is that for them to be added to the system, since they're on a septic, they would have to be deemed inadequate. And health department would have to say it's a need for them to come on, right? So they just can't automatically connect without that extra. Um, she has to say it and then the board of finance has to say, okay. But given the monies, if we came forward with a project, it's within my purview to add a line. So we could theoretically add that line. We're just, I'm just trying to do a little bit of diligence to find out. You know, I'd love to know historic, I'd love to find out that somebody said no and why. I don't think I will, but I wanna do the diligence first to find that out. Um. You know, I, eh, that way I feel more, you know, I, I feel comfortable moving forward with it because I think, I think it should be done personally. I don't know why I have a hole in the middle of my sewer district. I can't understand why I do. But um, I think we should go forward. It's just a question of how do we get there and who pays? How do I make it fair to the residents that hooked up? And expanded the system to hook up, you know, and paid on their own dime, right? How do I look them in the eye and say, listen, you had to pay for you, but I'm gonna pay for that. That, that's what I, I, I gotta, I gotta, you know, I'm wrestling with that, to be perfectly honest with you. Trying to find out exactly how I can answer the person on Conrad. Who had to spend fifty thousand dollars to hook up when I'm gonna put in a line and then just ask the residents to come to the street to hook up. Where it would'll be a ten thousand dollar change instead of a fifty.
Well, giving them an option and some idea of pricing may be a good start.
Yeah, it's just that's, like I said, that's where, that's where we're at. I just, you know, I wanna treat every resident fairly. So the residents that hooked up prior. We gotta, I gotta have a fair answer to them as to why they needed to spend that amount of money.
Okay.
I didn't understand what you said earlier. Are you saying there has to be a showing of uh, an unhealthy condition before you can do any house?
Um. Well, that's if it's not in this, if it's not in the district, yes.
Oh, okay.
So right now, like, there's no, they're not in the district, right? And I, just because I put a pipe in the ground doesn't make them in the district. Um, but they would have to show a need to hook, hook up or the board of finance said no. They can hook up immediately, then they could hook up immediately. But normally it's, it's a, you have to show a need. Um, there's a, they, they make you run through your septic system to the end and then when you can't do anything with it. And it's, you know, your, the expansion capabilities aren't there, then Jen deems it whereby you can then hook up to a, to our system. We've never really had an expansion of the system. We had the expansion of the system once to hook up the Merritt Parkway. But they paid for that themselves. The state paid for all that work. And then. The people that were in front of that line still had to petition to the board of finance because they were on septic to then go forward. And Jen had to give the go-ahead. I think we only had one or two people hook up present to that existing line. That line, that new line that was installed. So we, eh, we're in un, we're in uncharted territory, unprecedented. I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, before I set a precedent going forward, I wanna know. You know, and I'm okay filling the middle. I just, you know, it really comes down to expansion of the system outward. That's where we have, where we have concerns. We don't wanna do that. But filling the system in the middle, I think is fair. You know, I, and I, because I can't look at that map and say, well, this is why. I don't, I don't have an answer to anyone sitting on Kelly Green.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're the closest to my treatment plan out of the majority of the residents we serve. And uh, and they're uphill, you know, I'm having a hard time saying, why, why can't I, why can't you come, you know? Why can't you come down the hill to us, right? It's easy, it's gravity, you know.
So you've got analysis to do beyond just the question of the condominium complex that may not. Want you to run the line through their property.
Correct. I got, yeah, I got a couple of hoops I gotta jump through first and then find that. And then, then there are other ways to skin that cat, you know, I mean. Yeah, theoretically I could put a pump station at the bottom of the hill and pump it back up to the top. To uh, woodland and have it run down woodland at that point. And then it'll get to me at that point, right? It's provided that woodland's big enough to, to manage that additional flow. There's some additional analysis that has to be done. You know, so it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy win and I, and I don't have an answer at present. You know, I'm, like I said, I, because there's, there's uh, pitfalls everywhere, right? You know, I put, the easiest thing is to put the line in. The hardest thing is then to answer every resident who says either they can't hook up or why, why did you charge me to hook up? Why did you pay? Why did I pay when you're paying for everybody else? Tax dollars are the same. That's all.
Always was a bad spot, yeah.
Yeah, so. Any other questions on any of the operating before we get to capital? I know we kinda went a little bit longer than. We good?
Yeah.
I, I can only see five of you and they're the last five people that spoke, so the uh.
We're good, we're good.
Thank you. Yeah, so moving to the capital. Our capital is um, oh, it's thirty-four percent over last year. Um, but there's reasons for it. Um, in and of itself, it's a twelve point five million dollar request. We received nine point three million last year, so it's a three million dollar increase or thirty-four percent year over year. And I'll run you through each department um, as we go. So when the administration and the engineering side, we have our standard fit, our standard fare pretty much. You know, I'll mention, I'll, I'll talk about the payment management program now. That's a two point four three eight million dollars. Um. The numbers here are the, the full number. We actually get four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars back in grants. Uh, we get a tar grant from the state every year. It's around three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then we get a low sip grant every year, a local capital grant. Um, the tar grant is a town aid road, right? So they, the state gives money to all towns, um, based upon your population and the number of miles you have. And there's a huge, there's a large formula that goes into it. We don't get a lot of money because we have a lot of money. So some towns, the only money that they spend on their roads is the tar funds that they get from the state. We're not in that situation. So the uh, and then we get a, a low sip grant, local capital improvement program grant for about a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. That's also on a formula and we're on the low side of that formula as well. But uh, to give you an idea of what our road network looks like, we had um, two years ago, we had street scan come in. Um, and do an analysis. They go every single road with a, a computerized van. Took video of every single road, analyzed each one and then plotted it. On this uh, chart for what we call our pavement condition index. We had done it in two thousand and four. We had been running forward for fifteen years and I thought it was a good opportunity for us to take another look and see exactly where we were. And lo and behold, we were exactly where we thought we were. They rated us a little bit higher than we were. We were at an eighty-three. They rated us at an eighty-five. Um, the six, so we're actually a little bit better on their scale. I think, you know, I was trying to be a little bit conservative. But you can see here, the dark green is an excellent road within an eighty-five or above. Eighty-five is our marker where we'd like to be. Good road is somewhere between seventy and eighty-five. That's the light green. And I'd argue that the light green, the majority of our roads at that point in time are probably an eighty to eighty-five. Um, because at the eighty mark, we actually treat them again with some type of um. Uh, some type of treatment, a microthin overlay, a cave seal, something of that nature. The moment it gets to seventy-seven, it jumps to a hundred. So I'd argue that the, all these good roads are probably an eighty, okay? Um. And then we have fair and poor and the, the poor roads, if you look, there's only a couple in here. There's a, there's a pitchfork one. That's uh, basically down to the middle of the screen down at the bottom. That's Field Crest and Village. This snapshot in time was done in twenty nineteen and every single orange road has been taken care of. And the majority of the yellow roads outside of the center of town. Or I should say, all of the yellow roads on the outside of town have been taken care of. The yellow roads on the inside are all the ones that were affected by ever source gas. And even some of those we took care of this year. Old Studio Road being one of them, that's uh. That's right here. If you can see the pointer, that's Old Studio Road that got paved this year. And there are a couple of others that we took care of this year as well, that, uh, of the yellow marker that are, that are now done. So there's no orange, there's no yellow. We're all basically to the goods. So. When people complain that our roads are terrible, they're basically looking at just this one aspect, this one area. And the problem is that that services our downtown, three or four of our schools, all of our town parks. So the end of your drive or the beginning of your drive after you, you've reached your destination. You're starting off on a bad road, but it doesn't give me credit for the hundred and ten miles of road that I have that are in excellent condition. That are actually keeping up my PCI, which is at about an eighty-five. I had a resident complain this year that our roads were in awful condition and they, she thought that we would be more commensurate with Greenwich, since she had just moved from Greenwich. So I reached out to the, the deputy commissioner in Greenwich, he's in front of mine, Jim Michael, and asked him, what's your PCI? My PCI right now is eighty-five point one seven. I said, what's yours, Jim? And he said, mine's on or about eighty-six. And of course it's gonna be on or about eighty-six because I'm on or about eighty-five. So he had to be better than me, but you know, if I hadn't given him my number first. If I hadn't given him my number first, he wouldn't give me his number because no one wants to give you anybody their number. But if I hadn't given him an eighty-five, if I'd given him an eighty-three, I might've gotten an eighty-four back as an answer. So I figured that we're, we're commensurate with Greenwich, you're probably better than Greenwich. And I know that we're better than Barry and Norwalk, Stanford and Ridgefield. Um, since I drive, you know, I drive in from Ridgefield or, or through Ridgefield every day. I, I see exactly what they've gotten and I know that we're better than New York State. You know, our border, our border towns, Wust, you know, they're much better than Wustboro. Um, so, you know, when someone says that the roads are bad, I just want everybody to understand that. Roads are in excellent condition or in very, very good condition. It's just happens to be the downtown. And this coming year, we'll take care of primarily all of them. Um, ever source will be paying for most of them, but we'll be taking care of primarily all of them. We have some that we won't be able to touch because they've got water lines there going in. I reached out to a quarry in this year. Again, as I always do, I said, listen, we're coming through with a whole slew of roads. What do you got? And they came back with about a half a dozen roads that they wanna put water lines on. The only good thing is that they'll pay fifty percent of the repaving and then ever source pays for the other fifty percent. So we actually save money. The sister company of ever source electric or ever source gas will then be saving ever source gas money on their restoration costs. So it's a, it's a win-win overall. And then some of the roads just won't get done because they have roads uh, works slated for later. So Harrison, while people want, might want Harrison be paved, it's gonna get a thirty-six inch transmission line in two thousand and four. In, in two thousand twenty-four, so there's no reason for us to repave it now when they're gonna open up the entire road curb to curb to put this, this water main in. But that just gives you a go. It's, yeah, I know people have been saying that the roads are, and I, and I necessarily won't ever go tit for tat with a resident, but at least you can understand. What it looks like. So as you're, you drive five miles into town, your first four and a half miles, four and three quarter miles are on a great road and then the. The finishing, finish is terrible, right? And it used to be the other way around. The downtown was in excellent condition and we worked our way out. Now we're having to work our way back in again.
Tiger, I try not to leave the inside of town since that's where I live, so.
I know. It's always good, and it is what it is. I can't, I can't do anything about it. You know, the um, I mean, it's a good thing to have the expansion.
Right.
And the fact that we had to lose a year because of COVID killed it, right? So I had to give it an extra year. That, that's all. It's, it's, it's really, it's fine. I have no problem.
Will all those, will, will all those areas that you point out in, eh, 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 in the light green?
The uh, the light green, well, it, we touch the light green when it reaches an eighty, seventy-seven. Actually, it's one year past an eighty, right? So the year after an eighty, we drop about two and a half points a year. Okay, so I get to a seventy-seven and a half, which I round down to a seventy-seven. And that year, we then put a microthin overlay on or a cave seal and it automatically jumps back up to a hundred again. So we try never to get below a seventy-seven on any of our roads. Um. So with, with that, you're, you're looking at those light green roads when they, when they get to the ten-year mark. It's a ten-year mark for that road. It'll get resurfaced. If it's, if it's light green because ever source touched it next year, hopefully we're gonna take care of. If you can see the cursor, we're gonna take care of this entire block here and hopefully somewhere in here, this block. So it was basically from Oak Street, okay? The farm road, so that area, we're looking at redoing. Everything. It is provided that Korean isn't putting a water line on there or provided that, you know, um, I've got too many services that we still need to hook up. For the most part, ever source feels they've reached their saturation rate and those are the roads we're looking to do. So all of those. That light green and some of those yellows are gonna hop straight to a dark green. And our PCI is gonna jump markedly. We're gonna be in a, a very good spot. Um, and then they'll be, you know, and then they'll have some, we'll have some additional growing pains on uh, Upper Elm Street, Grove Street and Pine Street as they go to put in gas there. They're putting gas right now. Um, it just started today, the back of town hall. So they're coming through the Park Street lot. And they'll get to the back of town hall within a couple of weeks. And then they'll be able to service the restaurants off of Elm Street from that stretch as well. So there's a, there'll be a little bit of growing pains again for next year, but not as much as it has been in the past couple of years. And the downtown pretty much be free at that point. There won't be much work in the downtown.
And then Tiger, my, 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 I just have a quick uh, follow-up question.
Yeah.
If, if we, if we're assuming inflation is going to accelerate or at least I, I believe it is, and especially with. Wage inflation in some of these uh, markets going up considerably. I mean, is it fair to just flatline on the cap, on the, you know, to assume, let's say, two million dollars going forward for. Eh, you, you know, for the foreseeable future. Is that, is that going to be? Are we able, are we gonna be able to maintain our roads at the level that you, you think is necessary?
I believe it's a two and a half mark for since two thousand and four, two point, I mean, we're at two point five per annum. For the past three, four years, we've been getting this two point four three eight. And to be honest with you, that's sixty-two thousand dollars. Well, it seems like, oh, it's just sixty-two thousand dollars. That's a cul-de-sac, right? So that's, that's, that's what it costs me to pave a cul-de-sac. So I, I, and I got seventy-one of them. So every year I lose sixty-two thousand dollars. I lose a cul-de-sac. But we've been able to maintain because we've been opening up on our quiver of, of um. Treatments, right? So we started off, it was just a reclaimed mill and pave. Right now I got a reclaimed mill and pave. I've got a hot-in-place asphalt. I've got. A microthin overlay. I've got a cave seal. We crack seal everything early. You know, we crack seal at the five-year mark. We'll crack seal at the three-year mark if we need to. We crack seal at five, we crack seal at ten, put a microthin overlay over the top of it, I crack seal again at fifteen and then I come back in again at twenty. And where we start redoing it. And so far, we've been able to maintain it. Amy's been having this question. She's been asking me this question for several years now. And I, and. I've seen that our, our PCI is still holding, right? So our PCI is still increasing. What we had was at the time when we started in, in two thousand and four, two million dollars was a stasis point, right? That was just to maintain our roads at that level, right? So our PCI was a seventy-seven and it was gonna stay a seventy-seven for the entire time. If we spent two million dollars going forward, right? Not counting in inflation, it's, you know, twenty years out, but two, two million dollars. The only way to get the PCI to change was to add that five hundred thousand dollars. To then start to get us to a little bit more every year. And now, you know, with the, with the additional techniques that we've been able to utilize, um, we've been able to save money and still get the same bang for our buck, right? But eventually, push is gonna come to shove. Um, and I'm waiting to this year to see our asphalt prices as the, as the season rolled this year. Continue to spike along with the oil prices, right? And they don't tend to, if oil comes down dramatically, we don't see a market change in asphalt prices. They'll take that and stay there, right? They'll, they'll take a little bit of a hit back down again, but they're not gonna come back down to normal. We started off, I was paving, it was fifty-two dollars and fifty cents a ton. I'm paying ninety-eight eighty now. I'm paying forty-six dollars more a ton, but I'm able to still maintain an increase based upon. Our techniques and what we're doing and, and um, what we're asking, you know, and what the contractors have been able to provide. So. All that said, yeah, we're able to manage it, but eventually, probably not. No, I, but I don't, I'm hoping that's. Outside my realm. Hoping that's, you know, after I retire in twelve years.
Tiger, I'm, I'm kinda.
Twelve-year-old. I got, I got twelve years left, so I got twelve-year-old.
Tiger, I'm in, I'm in Mark's camp on this one. We.
Tiger, I'm in I'm in Mark's camp on this one. We talked about this a lot, but I mean, there's two things. One is some of this should be an operating expense, not capital expense, but that's another point. But you have talked about this in the past, that the, uh, you know, for lack of a better word, the recipe for the asphalt you get changes all the time and that if it has less oil in it, that it doesn't have such a useful life. So, you know, it's great that you can work some magic, okay? But at some point, if it costs more, you just gotta tell us it costs more. That that's kind of.
And I'm aware of that. I I just, you know, I I look at every year I do a five year out, right? So every year I I go five more years, right? So I look and I see where I'm at, what I need to, what I need to, what I need to do. And I say, okay, for this year, I'm good. Because based upon my numbers, uh, you know, and what I what I see out there, I'm good. I I I um but you're right, there push is going to come to shove because construction always lags behind a recession, right? So construction is coming back up again, you know, and and I'm seeing that now in the numbers and our bids are split up into all our different line items and they were able to, contractors were able to keep themselves competitive by, you know, nickel and diming some of their other line items. Those line items that they were nickelining and diming are now coming back up to what they were, you know, ten years ago, right? So that that's taking up that slack that's there and our numbers now are going to start to increase.
Tiger, what I would suggest is that, look, well, I I I I think Mike and Amy make a very good point. And even if you're not inclined to revisit this number this year, just in as a presentation note to yourself, you know, like we we you you take a lot of good care in setting other parts of this presentation into their proper context. I think it probably would serve you well to lay the foundation for your conversation with us next year. If you're not going to revisit them this year, right? You can say, look, I looked at everything and I I think this is a good number for this year, whatever. But there is a story to tell and and I think that, you know, when you look at the constituents who you're going to be speaking to, you already spoke to B O S, you're going to come to Board of Finance, you're going to go to Town Council. I think it really does serve you well to kind of connect, you know, the prior conversations we have on this and and lay the foundation so that when you come back next year and you can say, all right, you know, we we couldn't hold the breach any longer. This is now upon us. These are where these numbers go. They shouldn't surprise anybody. And here we'll take you through. Then then we're kind of where we are. Now, now, you know, like everybody else, if you think you do need to revisit these numbers, um, you know, this year, you you obviously have our support, but um if even if you don't, it it I just think from a presentation point of view, again, just puts it all into context. It's very hard. There's lots of magic. There's lots of, you're dancing as fast as you can and you've been able to pull off some pretty good economic magic as you've maintained, you know, the service and the conditions of the roads, et cetera. But going forward, you see a lot of different pieces that are all going to contribute towards an outcome that isn't going to allow this to remain as flat as it has been. I think that's a good story to do.
Yeah, no, thank you. Cause I've been, yeah, I've been two and a half for fifteen years and.
Right.
More, you know, eighteen years. And I and I know that it's coming because Amy keeps asking me and every year I say, I'm okay. I got one more ending, you know, and then up, but you are right. It's it's I'm I'm this year I'm waiting. I think this year is going to, it's going to, I'm going to tip a little bit because I I just want to see exactly what my numbers are. And that makes it hard because I, you know, the number's already here. I'm anticipating based upon what I saw, what I'll need and um.
And Tiger, are we are we getting a little bit of are we kind of getting this underwritten by the fact that with all the the water lines and stuff like that, we don't have to pave some of those roads? Is that kind of getting picked up?
That's good.
In an odd way?
Well, that that jump is going to help me. Yeah, you know.
Right? So that's underwriting. Yeah, and and somebody that somebody else is underwriting the increased expense because of all this other work.
Yeah, well, you know, I I had a, you know, the um, well, aquarium, yeah, fifty percent of Marmar Brinkeroff Lockwood is being paid by Aquarian, right?
Exactly.
Um, you know, the the town is assuming the other fifty percent because we had never touched the road prior, so I wasn't charging ever source with gas for that. That was our part of our M O U. But the re- the remaining portion of roads that are in in the in the downtown area are all going to be picked up by ever source gas. So I'm going to see a market, you know, I'm going to see a jump, so to speak, in that. So I'm going to get a pickup out of that. So that's why it's one of the reasons why I think this number can stay a little bit low for now because I'm going to get a pickup from them. But eventually that pickup is going to go and then I'm going to be like, okay, you know, now I'm I'm left, you know, so yeah, because I'm adding in, you know, I'm taking into account some of their work they're going to be doing next year and the year after, right? In the next, you know, because they've got two years of paving to 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 get back what they what they disturbed.
I think that makes sense, Tiger, to like, but like lay the groundwork. For an ask in a year or two. So that it's not a surprise in a year or two, but I do think it makes sense to let what needs to be improved downtown by the different actors happen. And then we'll really kind of know where the town is and are where our responsibilities are. Once that's complete, because I think everybody's focus is so on the downtown and and that's different third parties' responsibilities that have to get weighed in there. And then so in a year or two, like eighteen months, let's say, we'll have a better idea of what the scope of your work really is, right?
Yes, I'll have a I'll have a much better idea at that point as as after they're done and then, you know. Yeah, then we can see.
Tiger.
And then I can also see what what this what this round of inflation is going to do to my numbers because, you know, construction is relatively flat, right? So I, you know, that's the problem is it's been, you know, I I I could tell you their numbers, you know, I could tell you exactly what they were going to bid, you know, for the past two, three, four years. I knew what the numbers are going to be. This coming year, I don't know what the numbers are going to be, you know, and I and I'm and I'm not, it they they could be higher than I'm expecting. That could be a bad thing, but I'm going to get a jump from ever source and aquarium, which will help me carry for the next two. And then, yeah. And at that point in time, I say, listen, the numbers trended and here's where the new numbers are. You know, that kind of thing. Yeah, um, you know, because like when I say when asphalt went from fifty two to ninety eight, that's all well and good, but at the time they were they were reclaiming at five and they were milling and paving at three points. They were at three point seven five for the reclaim for per square yard and three seventy five per square yard for a mill. Those numbers are now down in the twos, right? So that's where they made up that number, right? They jumped that number down and that allowed everything to stay, right? So because they had a savings there, you had an increase in asphalt, you had savings everywhere else and the numbers were still coming in consistent. But eventually, that's not going to come to pass. Sorry, Penny, you had a question?
Yeah, I was going to say, have you been able to um quantify and list all the um um rows that have been uh interrupted by, you know, um, the gas line coming in? And what you would have spent on those roads in your normal annual uh expenditures, because that's really what you have saved. Um, and so if you can put that number, that that's that would be an important number to know. Uh, because you have taken that savings amount and putting it, put it into the today's projects of whatever the past three years have been um and worked away at at um advancing those projects, those other projects, because you have had the benefit of that. I mean, there's, there's, you know, there's another dynamic there that you really should understand that has been a benefit.
Yeah, well, yeah, the money that I didn't spend on the roads that were in bad shape.
Yeah.
That I spent on roads elsewhere, right? So you are right. So, you know, um, and I, you know, uh, I'll have to take a look because last year, you know, it was a year I deferred a couple of roads based upon what we had. I it also, the the problem that we have, it also runs with, since I'm on a calendar basis, right? So
Right.
Ten years out, right? So what I did ten years ago is what I need to do now, right? So if I had a low year at ten years ago, I got a low year this year. That's why we always ask for a two year allocation, right? Because a two year allocation would help me balance out those times when I had a low year versus a high year. Those two combined would be, you know, basically a medium year over two years and I would have that number. I have to take a look and see exactly what what uh what I would have spent on those fifteen miles of road. I can tell you over a three year span, I would have at least crack sealed them. So, you know, I'll know exactly how much that is. A a number of them at the time aged out, right? So they aged out past the past the micro thin overlay, right? So they each got past the micro thin overlay and I'm going to get the benefit of them repaving them. But, you know, I I did have the savings on the micro thin overlay that I could then apply to other roads in other locations. So a good question. It's a good, you know, I'll have to I'll have to look back at at um every road and see what they what what I would have spent and on what years. So I'll take a look.
Because it'd be, it'd really be nice if you actually did come out ahead. You know, but it is possible, but it is possible, you know, that that you haven't necessarily come out ahead. Uh, and and that would be an important number to actually know that, um, yeah, we got, we got new, we got them to do, you know, new roads for us instead of us doing them. But has that really, you know, been to our benefit or or not?
I can I can run the analysis. I can drop out the roads and then run the analysis of how much it would have been in this year versus, you know, what the unit prices were for each road when it fell in, right? So I could fall in with a square footage or square yardage and figure out exactly how much that road would have cost me at in the twenty nineteen pricing for the twenty eighteen pricing and then.
Yeah, sure.
I saved, in essence, saved that, applied it to someplace else. And then the cumulative effect of that would be how much is ever source paying back, right? So if ever source is paying back more to repave me than what I would have spent, I'm better, you know?
Well, that's good. And then actually my quiet down, some of the complaints that you get, you know, the roads are terrible. So well, yeah, you know what? We actually are coming out ahead of the game here. So.
Yeah, there should be, yeah, there should be a little payback for the pain, right? That's about where I'm at. It's a little payback.
That would be, that would be really nice to be able to quiet down a few, you know.
Uh, to Penny's, to Penny's point here, I I I think that there's definitely an advantage. There's no question in my mind that we've we've done well on this. I guess my concern is, and maybe it's delusional at this point totally, uh, is that you know, this was originally a ten year approval of a pavement management program and now we're into, what, seventeen years? I was hoping that with all the new techniques and um and add-ons here that you've got, that we would be able to, you know, reduce this over time or expand it, extend it out. But also, all of these other costs that are now under your capital, most of this was in operating. At what point is is it always going to be part of the capital just because it's easier to pay it that way? And also, my last thought here too is I thought we had approved the cameras and security upgrades. And when this conversation ramped up recently, I was sort of surprised. I thought that was on order and was going through. And I appreciate Bob's letter, actually. I thought it was very good. But where are we on that? I mean, is this an additional? Somewhere else.
I'm sorry. Bob who?
Robert C. Young.
Oh, Robert C. Young. I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, gotta make sure that middle initial is.
Yeah, you're right.
Even if it was your husband, it's all good. The um, I'll try to, I'll try to tackle each one. So yeah, the paving cycle is a twenty year cycle, right? So, you know, we looked at ten years, but we knew it was going to be a twenty year program.
We knew it was.
Right. And right now, um, if ever source hadn't derailed me, I would have been done in seventeen years, okay?
Yeah.
Seventeen to eighteen years, I would have been done. I was three years ahead of schedule. I'm still going to be ahead of schedule at present before um, I believe that my four years, you know, at at two thousand and four or two thousand and twenty four is the twenty year mark. I think I'm still ahead. At the end of twenty three, I think I'm ahead because I think I'm going to finish everything that we had, but the pavement cycle is a twenty year cycle, right? And then it starts all over again. It's like painting the Brooklyn Bridge, right?
I think we need.
Come back, you do it again. That's the problem is that it's it's never ending. The moment you start it, it never ends. The um, can you take your foot off the pedal for one year? Absolutely. But you got to put your foot back on the pedal. It's not necessarily the best thing to do because you're saving two and a half million dollars and I lost a year of all the hard work that went into getting that number back up again. And I lost two and a half points in one year across the board, which would be.
Oh, I get it. Yeah.
That, you know, so the um, the uh, the other question, the uh, the majority of these are all capital improvements in the fact that, you know, I I I never had this in my operating side ever. Um, you know, we had parking lots in the sidewalks, you know, I had sidewalk repairs was like fifty thousand dollars, maybe.
We did. We had an operating.
Right. And then the the cameras and security, this is like year three, right? So
Yeah.
Year one was waving, okay? Um, and the Deputy Chief spoke today at and kind of set the record straight at the board of selectmen level. As Nick asked the question, he said, the cameras are waving and you're working, right? And they're actually a very high quality camera.
Yeah.
Um, and they've always been working. They've always been, um, and we had a glitch at one point in time with one where it's not focusing very well, but that was all while we were testing it out. And they worked. The investigators would like us to see putting in not a license plate reader, but a license, an L P C, which basically they can see the license plate. It won't read it, you know, you know, for them, but they can see it and they can see it in all levels of 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 light. Right now, they can see the license plate during the day clear as day. So when you when you look at when those when those break-ins occurred, we looked at when those break-ins occurred and we could read the license plate of every single car leaving. Problem is, during that timeframe, there's a thousand cars that came in and out of wave any during that timeframe and they don't have a car that was a suspect vehicle. They don't know because no one saw the vehicle. So they can't even then track it. They'd just be looking at license plates, trying to run random license plate numbers to see if it was a rental car from Florida and maybe that was the gang that came in to do it. So the the cameras work. They work very well and um we're gonna, we are going to change over. We changed over one of those to a very good light, good camera um that'll read the license plate day or night, wind, snow, rain, whatever, it'll read it. Um, or they can, they can read it on the screen. Let's put it that way. And then we're going to change over the other two. They've been ordered. We're just waiting for them. Every other camera that we've been doing is on the town side for liability. And there is some type of, you know, it does help the police. They were able to solve two uh crimes from the cameras that we had that were just for our liabilities. They were able to solve those crimes using our cameras, right? So the and the cameras that we're going to put in are these cameras whereby might necessarily be able to read the license plate, but during the day, you'll be able to see everything you need to see. And uh, we've already changed over about sixty plus sixty odd number of of those cameras already into the milestone system that was part of the the program that we bought originally. Okay, so we bought this milestone system and you can expand up to, you know, thousands of cameras on that system itself. The city of Bridgeport uses it. You can imagine how many cameras they have. Um, so you and if you right now, now, right now, we're just building out the system. The the chief himself is going to come back in with a request for what they need to try to then solve crimes that they see, you know, to help them in the crime fighting aspect. We're looking at a liability and stop, you know, prevention whereby, you know, I get to see if there's a slip, trip or fall, if there's a liability issue somewhere in and around the town building. You know, things of that nature. You know, I've got cameras up at the transfer station because I've got cash, I've got transactions going on. I don't have cash transactions, but I got transactions going on. You know, I got a guy, you know, he's 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 taking a credit card, you know, I, you know, he's receiving a check. I want to know, you know, at that point in time, what's going on. And it's got video and audio, so I can actually listen to the, you know, conversation back and forth. God forbid that there's an argument. Uh, so those are our cameras, you know.
Tiger, to just to clarify, if I'm hearing you correct and to Judy's question, the we should be talking to the Chief of Police about why those cameras haven't gone into wave me. Is that essentially what you're saying?
Those the the, after we put the initial cameras in, then the investig- the investigators originally told us, these are the cameras we want. We put those in. Then the investigators came back and said, you know what? They're not necessarily fitting the bill. We said, okay, we're going to, we'll elevate, we'll elevate one. We elevated one to a new one and they said, these are fantastic. Can you change these over? I said, yes, that was a recent change, a recent, you know, recent uh development. So we're buying those and putting those in. So those three in Waveney will have this where they can read it day or night um in the rain, you know, things of that nature. And then the chief is coming back with his own plan for what he needs in and around the downtown or, you know, on the gateways into town to then manage with license plate readers to see exactly who's coming in and out of town, right? And that's on a crime fighting standpoint. That's not my aspect. You know, we will help him manage the installation and the actual setup. But the actual specification of those cameras has to be by the chief or by the police department. It has to be directed by the police department.
That's part of this, right? That is that, that's not part of this budget, Tiger, right?
No, this is, this is um.
This is just your, like, this is litigation purpose or, you know.
Yeah. And if it and if it can, if it can help them and it has helped them in the past, then absolutely, you know.
You guys can share information, but you're not, your budget does not concern any crime fighting prevention, anything like that, that that the chief is going to come separately to ask for appropriation for.
Right. Port of finance, yeah. Port of finance asked him at the time and he said he'd come back with a plan. He's come back with a plan this year and I think he's got, you know, he wants to put in license plate readers on certain, you know, the gateways into town to take a look at it. That's that's what he's he's looking to do. And then he's got some other one. That's, that's what he's, he's looking to do. And then he's got some other ones that he wants to put in and around the downtown in, you know. Um, and then if our installations, if we can upgrade our installations to better serve them, we will. You know, but our, but our installation during the day, you can read everything you need. You can see everything you need to see, you know. It's just the nighttime version. That, that makes it a little difficult.
Tiger, is this the third? This is the third year?
Yeah, the first year was Wavening and only Wavening. And to be honest with you, it actually took us more money to do Wavening. Than the initial fifty thousand allotment. It cost about sixty-two grand. So I had to eat into the next year's allotment to, to make up for it. This is really a liability standpoint for all of our buildings.
Okay. All right. That's much, yeah. Thank you.
So, uh, no problem. So then, yeah, we do have one new initiative in here, and this is what we call it. Bridges under twenty feet, right? So it's a designation from the state. They designate twenty feet and above and twenty feet and below. It's a span length, right? So this gives you a map of. The majority of our bridges in town, not all of them, but the majority of all of our large bridges. And at the time that this was developed, this is built back in two thousand and four or so. Um, you had the red, yellow and green, and red obviously was a concern, yellow was a concern and green was fine, right? So. All of the red bridges are done. All of the yellow bridges except for Nursery Road right here down at the bottom. Are done, and all the green ones are still in good condition. Um, but the red ones were part of our larger bridge initiatives that, that we're taking care of. The last one that we're taking care of is Collins Pond. That'll be next year. It's right here. So all the reds and the yellows are done except for nursery, but nursery right now is a sufficiency rating of ninety-six. So there's no reason for us to change it, you know, at this point in time. It's built in nineteen fifty, but its sufficiency rating is at ninety-six. I have it in my out years of my budget and stays there until we need it. But what we're concentrating on now is everything that's under twenty feet. We've got about twenty-four separate structures that are under twenty feet. That necessarily need some work, right? So I estimated that. I put in seventy-five thousand dollars for this year for the engineering aspect of it. So three thousand dollars per, per structure. Gives me the seventy-five thousand dollars, three thousand dollars for the, for the engineering. Um, for it. And then the following year, I've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars laid out, ten thousand dollars on average for each structure to do. Whatever repairs there are that, that we need to get, that we need to mitigate. The state comes in and does help us with some of these inspections. And some of the inspections will have our consultant do, but it's, it's an aspect that we've got to take a look at because they're, while they're, they might be a culvert. Um, they might be considered a bridge, but they're necessarily a culvert, like the ones on Richmond Hill. People consider them to be, uh, they're considered a bridge, but it's really a culvert underneath the road. And, uh, it's something that, that we need to take a look at and, and it's time for us to take a look at it there, um. Just to make sure that we're not having any, any problems underneath the roadway. But that's, and then this is a map of our P O C D from twenty fourteen of the sidewalks in town. Um, and the areas of focus that, that were part of the P O C D, right? So everything in red. Is where an installation is where they feel an installation should be, right? Where we should be looking at for sidewalks to go in. Now, the interesting thing is that we already did here a park in Richmond Hill. We already did here Grove in Richmond Hill. Um, I did a couple of other areas in and around town. We've got this under design and it's at the state for funding. Um, from, um, lots of funding. This is gonna be done as part of a lots of funding as well. Um, this right now is under design, part of the board of selectmen. Right here, this is Millport Avenue. It's got a sidewalk, but it needs to be replaced. And we're gonna be repaving Millport this year and we're taking care of that sidewalk. This is Harrison, and we might do Harrison at some point in time, but you know, when that transmission line goes in, but that's a whole separate subject. And then in through here, this is one oh six from Park Street on down. That we just received DARPA funds for. So the majority, and then here is Old Norman Rock Road. We already put in a sidewalk here back in. Two thousand and thirteen, Main Street sidewalks. So we've got some in and around that were already in the works, um, and we're attacking most of them. And then here, this larger stretch right here. That was a stretch from Elm Street on Elm, from Elm on Weed all the way to Irwin. And then this is the path that leads through the nature center, what have you. Out to Owen Oak. And, uh, and from there down and out. So that's our thoughts. Comes out to Owen Oak right here. And then that's Parade Hill up and through here, and we're, we're looking at bringing that forward at some point in time. We have the majority of all of these already in play, and that's some of the money that, that you're, that's slated inside that three hundred thousand dollars. Is not only maintenance, but, uh, but expansion of the system in keeping with the, the P O C D from twenty fourteen. And in keeping with the P O C D from two thousand and three, because these were, same ones were highlighted in two thousand and three. So these are a twenty year. And I've got petitions from the majority of these streets already. So. Where we're attacking.
Are you, are you also accounting for crosswalks wherever the sidewalks cross?
Am I accounting for them? Yes. Yeah. I, I've already gotten approval for the majority of the work that we have planned at present. I've already gotten, uh, police commission approval for if there was a mid-block crosswalk or a crosswalk necessary. Or an R R F B installation. I've already gotten approval for it. It just comes forward with doing the construction and then, um, installing the, uh, the devices. But at present, we, everything that we have under design at present, I've already gotten approval from the police commission. If it needed a mid-block crosswalk or a crosswalk added, it's terminus.
I think this is a huge story and it's well worth repeating over and over. This is a huge accomplishment. It's taken forever. But we've done an excellent job as a town with the sidewalks and the loop and the, and connected it all. I remember when nobody thought it would ever get done. So it's, it's really worth taking credit for, for your public works in the town.
Yeah, but that's, that just gives you an idea of where we're attacking, you know, and, and, and the thoughts. And at the next P O C D, hopefully when they come forward with the sidewalk map, they'll, you know, these things will turn to green. So they'll show that there's. And then they might show us some additional areas, but for the most part, I think we're gonna be okay.
So Tiger, is, is the request, the three hundred thousand dollar request, um, is that? Uh, and again, um, Mark and crew tell, is that inclusive of the ARPA funds or is that the ARPA separate?
That's, that's separate. The ARPA, the ARPA was gonna take care of this stretch right here. From here to Gower. Right, so Gower is right here. Okay, so this stretch through here, there is a request to go from Gower to, uh, Farm. But we're leaving that off for the timeframe. I wanna see, there's, it doesn't serve that many residents at that time. It does create a nice loop, but it doesn't serve. As many residents from here, from Gower, I'm able to take in all of Old Studio Road. And there's just a handful of residents. Um, in that stretch, right? You know, Richard's Drive is there as well, Richard's Avenue, but the, um. But so that's Richard's Lane, I'm sorry. The, uh, um. Yeah, right now, we're just going to Gower and then we'll see. It's gonna be a long haul because it's on a state road and they're not easy. Um, to be quite honest.
That, that, Tiger, that, that was needed because that, I mean, that's a dangerous area and that's the bird sanctuary entrance, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we did a traffic study there, you know, and, um, he came through with some short-term report, um. Guidelines and some long-term guidelines or some recommendations, I should say, and sidewalk was one of the long-term ones. We're attacking the short-term ones that we can. Some of it, we need state, um, to do. Some of it we can, we can do with state approval. So. You know, we already have an encroachment permit there to increase the signage. Um, and then I have a, a letter that went out to the residents on the curve itself. Because we want to put in some overhead lighting and overhead lighting is, um, is a, as a trigger point for most people. Because it gets into light trespass, it gets into, you know, dark sky initiatives, things of that nature. But you, I typically send a letter out to all the residents in and around that light. To let them know that there's a proposed light going in, and if they have any questions or concerns, they need to contact me. So those letters went out already. So there, anything that, any of the low hanging fruit that we can take care of without the state, we, we're trying to back. Already, and then we'll work through the rest of it.
And what about the Richmond Hill? Is that, is that in the, that's a tough one?
Hill is a lesson in frustration. To be perfectly honest with you, I, 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 I will never. I don't know if I'll ever, uh, go through this program again. It's a program through the state, so called lots of, it's a local travel, local transportation capital improvement program. And if the monies weren't so high, meaning that it was, that we weren't receiving one point six million dollars for this, I wouldn't be going through the aggravation, but it's gonna have been a three-year haul. And if I had the money, I would already be built because our design is the exact same as every other street in town. And it takes months and months and months to go through the state. And to give you an idea of just the, the, the sheer. Frustration of it all. We had the projects combined. It was Park Street from end to end. Okay, so from Bank Street. One oh six all the way to one twenty-four, okay? That was the entirety of the project, right? And it's ties into two state routes. It's a perfect project to do. Okay, one million dollars for the stretch, six hundred thousand dollars to do Richmond Hill from here to here. And we had them combined in a one point six million dollar request. And because. They were, uh, we felt that getting through Metro North through the railroad tracks was gonna take us some time. We separated the projects. And the state said, yes, separate the projects. And, and Westcog said, yes, separate the projects is a good idea. So we separated the projects. We finally got approval at the Westcog level to go to the state for state approval or commitment to fund. The first thing they said was, why aren't you combining these projects? So wait a minute, last year, we asked you, was better to separate? We told you it was the better separate, and they said, you know, we should be combining. We said, no, we're gonna keep them separate. But that gives you an idea. And then to give you a better idea whereby. To put in granite curb, I actually had to change our statute to actually have the board of selectmen say that. Granite curving is required in certain areas and then have planning and zoning adopted. Whereby every single project that, that we have done since nineteen ninety-eight, where the sidewalk is adjacent to the, to, uh, the curb line. Has granite curb and concrete sidewalk. Every single project. I named off probably a dozen projects that we did. Showing that the town is paying the additional money for this addition, for this upgrading materials. And the state said, it doesn't matter. We want you to change your, your standards. To reflect it. So I had to change my standards to reflect something that I had already been doing for, for twenty-three years. And I was like, this is ludicrous. So this is where we're at. So I'm waiting for what's called a commitment to fund letter. I got the commitment to fund. Now I'm waiting for final approval of the plans. And the plans have been done, sitting there waiting. And I'm still waiting now for them to say, okay, we're good. A lesson in frustration. And meanwhile, I've had two pedestrian strikes there. You know, two kids got hit by cars. And I say every time, I got two kids hit by cars. Can you move this along for me? And it's, they, it's, it's a, it's a terrible program. Now, 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 the interesting thing is if you take the T out of the lots of, and you just go to the low sub grant. The local capital improvement program grant. I could have done this underneath that. Paid for it underneath town money and gotten reimbursed from the state for it with virtually no paperwork, showing them an invoice. Work, okay? Just showing them an invoice. But because they put the T in it, it has all these other requirements associated with it. And now I'm years, years in design. It's, it's awful. I, I can't say anything else other than that, you know? And I, I don't know. If it wasn't one point six million, I wouldn't be doing.
Can we get help from one of our reps or send?
We've asked, it's, it's a requirement that they have. We, we're following through with their requirements. That's all it is. We're following the state requirement. And it's, it's, it's not a, not an easy thing. So.
Move along because we.
Yeah, I actually have a question. Can I ask a question? And it's the annual question is coming up, uh, Owen Oak in front of Saint Mark's so that. The, um, seniors, uh, living in the inn.
I have that under design and it's been a year in permitting with the state. Open that this year is the year, but Maria's been working through that and, um, it's, it's just a sidewalk replacement. It doesn't.
Well, now, you're not gonna, you're probably gonna have to take some trees down.
I might, but, but as far as the approval overall, it should be relatively easy. I'm replacing an existing sidewalk in it, but it's in the state right away, which makes it just impossible. Maria's working through the plan with the state. We need an encroachment permit and we're just working through the encroachment permit. But, you know, I told her that this year's gotta be the year because I wanna, I wanna complete the Green Link. You know, I, I wanna complete that portion.
Well, it, it is part of it, but it also is a huge liability issue for you because you've got people, you know.
It's one of my worst sidewalks in town. You know, I got, I got rid of Mortimer Brinker off in Lockwood this year. Well, I gotta get rid of. And then the only other real thing that we have on here, I won't say real thing, but the, the other thing we have on here, which is a new initiative, is that I have a. Purchase of E, two EV vehicles and, uh, chargers. For our, what's for our fleet, okay? So for, that's utilized by our land use department. Um, our land use department's building, fire marshal, um, tax assessor, engineering, planning and zoning, inland wetlands. Our fleet is basically old police vehicles, right? So when they go through the police and they come off the line. And they go to the administrative duty and they come off administrative duty, they go to land use. And at that point in time, they're well beyond their useful life and we're trying to keep them whole. So this year, we're trying to come forward and purchase two new EVs. And then the commensurate chargers to go along with it to then, you know, I have nine vehicles. I'm trying to replace two to three of them. And then get through and replace the rest of them because basically what they're doing is they're winding up spending more time in the shop. And causing hassle with my, with my fleet guys, my mechanics than, than, than their worth.
Tiger, what's EV?
EV, electrical vehicle, sorry.
Thank you.
No problem. You know, the, uh, so, you know, we, we specked out two, uh, two Chevy Volt's, you know, if they're, they're a nice vehicle. We think that there'll be a, a, a nice add, and then the maintenance drops off markedly, so that won't be hitting my fleet site. Too hard, but the, the fact that the vehicles are old and, um, they're constantly in the shop are not helping us at all. So we've never had a, we've never actually added a, um, a fleet vehicle. Everything's been a hand-me-down, hand-me-down of a hand-me-down, right? So. This is the first time they're actually gonna give them a, a newer car.
But Tiger, could we defer that until the price of vehicles goes down a bit?
We can, but it's just, you know, I'll, I'll spend more money on the repairs of the existing vehicles than it's worth, to be honest with you. You know, that's the problem I'm at. The, the vehicles that I have, I, I need to get rid of. You know, they're, they're just causing, they're, they're nothing but a headache. The, um, so now on the, on the town building side, the, um. I have a marker in here for the police department reconstruction at ten million dollars. I did not add that to my number because. I had seven and a half million last year and, and that got deferred. This year, I'm feeling that, you know, at some point in time, we've got to start saying, yeah, we're, we're getting ready for the police department. Um, I have nine hundred and ninety thousand for the second phase of the ADA upgrades at Wavening. That's for the bathrooms. I have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Lapham Center generator. Um, it is no longer reliable. Um, it's down more than it's up and Lapham is our emergency shelter. So it's our designated emergency shelter. So that's, that's almost a must-have. We have four hundred thousand dollars for a, a Lapham C H P, C H P unit at Lapham, and this should necessarily. Take into account, we're, we're adding the lights from the water tower turf fields to this. Um, and then we're almost expecting that this is gonna help us almost take Lapham off the grid. Um, I've got two hundred thousand dollars for the, for renovation of the Audubon House at the nature center. Uh, the nature center has, um, a lot of requests for additional, additional services for their twos and threes. So for two-year-olds and three-year-olds, and they have programming that they can run out of the Audubon House right now. It's just a. Building sitting there. It would be much better to be utilized. And we're partnering with the, uh, we're gonna partner with the nature center for that work. Then I've got ninety-five thousand dollars for other work at the nature center that I'll go into later. Got a hundred thousand dollars at this, at the daycare, at the schoolhouse apartments. We're responsible for that aspect, for that portion of the building. The rest of the building is taken care of by the schoolhouse apartments, but the daycare's part is ours. And the support columns that are there on the outside, you can see are all spalling. And, uh, the rebar is actually showing me through and starting to spider. So we've got some problems there that we've got to go in and take care of because it's a, it, it will soon become a structural nature. Um, for the upgrades to the Playhouse Theater. The selectman is working, Kevin is working hard with, uh, we have a potential, we have several people looking at, um, running the theater itself. One is raised to the forefront. I think we're gonna work with them. Um, and they'll have some capital monies in it as well for, uh, for renovations. And then I got a hundred thousand dollars to. For oil to gas conversions as, as we expand. The gas lines, um, I've got, I've gotta hook up the town hall. I gotta hook up, uh, I don't know, annex, possibly the Playhouse. Uh, a couple of others as we, as we move forward. About, and then the rest of it, there's about twenty-two other separate areas of concern that we have on the, on the, uh, the building sheet. If you got any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Could you tell me again what the Wavening House ADA upgrades are?
That's for the, that's for the bathrooms themselves and space too. So that's putting in, uh, ADA compliant bathrooms on the second floor. Um, and then some additional work on relocation of, of, um. Right now, Steve's staff is where we're gonna be expanding that area. If you remember, we've got to relocate Steve's staff elsewhere. So that takes into account. Some of that work, relocating.
Where's that, where's that proposed?
We're, right now, we're proposing to go into the, the apartment down the hall. That's, that's the thought, is to actually relocate all a rec down to the, down to the, um, down the hall to the apartment. And utilize that. Right now, it's, we're not utilizing that area of, of the house at all. Um, and, and then that'll open up the rest of the building for, um. Kevin's been working towards, uh, you know, um. Someone to come in and manage the property itself, right? So manage the house and try to manage, uh, the programming there. And, um. They've had some good responses back for it. So that, you'll see, the, there should be a presentation coming forward from that as well.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple things.
And waving, we we need to go back and kind of like, because we. It was, I think it's a million, a million and a half, a couple of years ago, we approved for this. We need to kind of reconstruct what was initially put forth. And now it's being put forth now because i- in this uh, the town, the list, it's kind of things of like. They used to be on one ni- line item. Now there's two, the ADA versus the HVAC. I think we we need.
Well, which we're trying, well, yeah, we're trying to designate it out so that people understand what it is because we keep getting asked questions on it, right?
Yeah. But it can make it seem smaller by de- dividing it up, like the whole ass. Need to understand.
It's it's not to do that. It's to answer the question, what's it for, right? Because we get the question, Waviney House, what's it for the outgoers? It's easier to put that large number of three million dollars under the HVAC line to show you that it's for HVAC, right? And that probably won't come to pass at that time anyways. We are designing right now. We have monies to. Take a look at the entire area and see exactly what we need to do for the house.
Yeah.
Um, and then we'll have a plan. In case we run into problems. We're not necessarily looking to go do it yet. We are, we have a case to go forward.
Now, I look, I have to say, Tiger, I think I agree with, you know, where I believe Amy's going with this. And this isn't really so much for you because you had patience to sit through these conversations for, you know, over a decade now. But look, you know, we own Waviney, it's ours. What we know, all the good things and all the bad things, right? So short of selling the asset, we don't have any choice. We need to do these things.
Right.
That being said, it is not unfair to say, what's the plan? Were you seeing that, right? And so and for a long time, people were saying, well, you know, we need to do a roof and we need to do the ADA when you do all sorts of. And at some point, in order to set some priorities, right? You need to understand what you're trying to solve for because, yeah, I mean, all these changes that. You know, the uh, HVAC doesn't work. Oh, well, we gotta do that. All the the bathrooms aren't compliant. Well, we gotta write a check for the ADA. Well, all these things are gonna come. There's no choice. We're gonna pay for these things. However, if we actually had a plan, we would have a sense of. Well, are the bathrooms really a greater priority than the HVAC or is there gonna be an elevator? Is there gonna be this and all that kind of stuff? Kind of falls into place once you get a plan. So it's not unfair to say to the appropriate body, and I know it's not you. What's the plan? What are we doing, right? Because otherwise, we're just gonna, every year, we're gonna sit here and say, oh, well, they said it needed a new roof. I guess we gotta write a check for a new roof. Well, of course, we're gonna do that. But we should, I don't think it's unfair to require from the various bodies, what what the.
Well, I I think that that was kind of given, you know, in in my opinion, it was a given, right? That we kind of were, I mean, I think, you know, we even kind of deferred a year to say. Unless we have a plan, I mean, because the council almost came out, right, said. You don't have a plan, don't ask for any money. I think John Angles, you know, said that. And and it's right. So they um, they've been, they interviewed a bunch of different. Groups, and I think that they've settled on one group that's that's coming forward. And that's the presentation I'm talking about is. As far as what would be the plan for Waviney and and the direction that that um, they're looking to take as far as a management of the property and what they. Those those managers might uh, are feeling that they can, I won't say glean from the asset, but necessarily glean from the asset, right? What's it's gonna be its usage and how are we gonna use it, right?
And 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 Tiger, that's all from, I guess Kevin and group said, we're gonna have a. MBA class come in and present something. That that's what this is from. So this is very, in my view, very preliminary, you know, so.
Well, yeah, I have to, you know, I mean, I I I'm I'm budgeting for eighteen years out, right, eighteen months out, right? So I gotta, you know, I have to throw this thing out there and say, this is what we're at, but the um. In between that time, you'll see the presentation because I can't come forward. And Kevin was the same opinion. We're gonna come forward asking for money without a plan. Because we were told, don't come back and ask for money without a plan, right?
And and by the way, that is so much the same deal with the Playhouse Theater.
The Playhouse Theater, actually, we have, we have a, we have a plan there too. There's actually, we interviewed a bunch of different books. And there's one that we're, that I believe that they're gonna settle on, not settle, it's a bad word, um, but choose.
Yeah.
And um, I think that in that presentation should be coming forward. I'm 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 gonna say momentarily, right? So within a couple of weeks.
But but I'm just gonna say.
You know, I I can't, I don't wanna disclose anything that Kevin doesn't want me to disclose, but they they have a very nice plan. And the people that are looking to run it. Um, do this elsewhere in the country and abroad. And uh, they're broad based and they're, I think that they're excellent. I think that they're gonna do a nice job. And I think it's gonna be really nice, nice theater. And that is the exact same thing.
Okay.
There's gotta be a presentation on the plan before you ask me for money.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta wait on that because you did the last chatter. From the office was, we're gonna do a first run movie theater when there, nobody's going to theaters. So we'll have to see what the, I'm just gonna say that, you know, we said at the Board of Finance, we would, you know, in in the town, cause we said, okay. You gotta fix the roof so it doesn't leak, but we gotta be very clear about what a real plan is. And when there, when there was chatter about a first run movie theater, when no one's going to movies and all the stats are down, but that's for them to present, so.
Right. And that, like I said, you know, you're you're looking at it because I'm looking at. I've gotta be ahead, right? Because I gotta, not ahead, but I've gotta have money available when they, when they unveil, right? So that's really where you're seeing, right? So it's kind of, they're, they're, you know, I I would say that. Uh, within a month, everybody's gonna see it. All the boards will see it, you know, we'll see the presentation. And I think that, I think the people, you know, they're doing it elsewhere and they're doing a very nice job elsewhere and. Uh, they're motivated and they're are have a very substantial financial backing. So it's not like a fly by nighter. I think it's gonna be a good, like a good thing.
Tiger.
At that point, yeah, Tom.
The the uh, moving the rec recreation staff to a different area and the cost involved in that. In a theoretical sense, it seems like a smart idea because that they they're in pretty elegant space. For for a clerical function, but um, but was there a plan behind that? Uh, was that something?
We have a, yeah, we, well, we have a, we have a, we have a plan to move them down to what was. Um, used to be a, an apartment um, for the, uh, some of the staff. That uh, helped maintain the facility itself. And it's just, it's a. Um, scenario that's never been, that's never utilized, um, other than it would be for this and it's accessible. Um, if you, if we, if and when we put in the elevator, you come up the elevator, walk down the hallway to get to them, right? Um, and then they would be necessarily out of the area whereby you could then utilize. One, it's gonna be for bathrooms, but then that whole upper floor can be utilized for if it was a wedding or, you know, whatever might be taking place there. You don't have administrative functions in the middle of your operation, right? You you've got use of the entire floor for whatever you want. Or you can necessarily could split the floors at that point in time and have it a function down below and a function above. And then, you know, the thought being that if you really wanted to um. Uh, do anything, you re- you renovate the library and you renovate the the billiard room. Or actually open them. You don't even have to renovate it. You just open them and utilize those.
Now there's a thought, Tiger.
I've wanted to have a staff meeting inside the billiard room for a decade, you know.
God, heaven forbid you go in the library.
I agree. Penny, I could, you couldn't say it more absolutely. Someone might ruin, someone may sit on something. Yeah.
The implication, what everybody seems to be saying is, whatever the ultimate function. Of a Waviney House, we'd like to have those rooms available as part of it. And so we're acting on that premise. It's not very specific, but it seems like a good idea. But I'm I'm still waiting for, for the vision.
For the vision of what? Sorry, Tom.
The the function of the whole house.
Well, that's, that's forthcoming, right? So, you know, they've been, they've been talking to two separate entities. One is a, you know, this MBA class and this other is uh, Noble House. And um, and I believe that they're, you know, they'll come forward with a nice, nice presentation as to how they wanna see. The house marketed or, you know, moved, um, you know, and what would happen in the future. You know, I, the unfortunate thing is, I think that they're a little bit behind schedule as to when they want to unveil, right? Because realistically unveil and then I say, I've got money for renovation, right? But we're a little bit early, right, on the whole unveiling. So that's the problem, you know, probably a month away, couple of weeks away from them showing exactly what's gonna happen. As to Tom's point and to the point from before, I told the council that I wasn't coming back without a plan. So there's gotta be a plan before I get to the council.
And how does the elevator fit into all this?
The elevator would be another phase, you know, and the thought is whether we combine the phases together. Had a meeting with Kevin today as to what, what he wants to do, whether to combine the phases together. Um, you know, and 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 try again that way, go with a separate phasing. Uh, he wants to take a look at it again. So I, you know, right now, the number is the number, um, but I would, you know, it's a draft. You know, ev- everything's subsequent to a draft.
Tiger, can you remind us what we've done in terms of the ADA compliance? Because I think Christina, you you were on it. But at that point, we're gonna put an elevator in, you know, and it gets, yeah.
Well, yeah, what happened was we were gonna do, we were gonna do the bath, it was supposed to go, I think. Elevator bathroom outside for, you know, the exterior, phase one, phase two, phase three. And um, and then the elevator timing on that was gonna get pushed because of material costs. And then we're like, why do the bathrooms now? We should do the exterior. So we brought phase three forward to phase one, took care of all phase three. Um, basically, so the you you saw the western ramp, you saw the loge work, you saw this, the staircase off the back. It's not necessarily a fire escape, but it's an additional means of egress. Um, to uh, to the outside from the inside. Um. So we took care of all those. Um, issues. So now the first floor is completely compliant.
Okay.
Albeit, we need to upgrade the bathrooms, but the first floor as far, as far as mobility is concerned, the first floor and the patio is. All is a hundred percent compliant. That's what we wanted, right, was to be compliant on the first floor, get, be able to get in, get around. And then we worry about bathrooms and then we worry about, you know, connectivity to the second floor. And the problem is that the best place to put the bathrooms, you know, you were there was was determined to be the second floor, right? So now I gotta, now you determine, you put the elevator in to get the second floor, put the bathrooms in the, then put the elevator, what do you do, right? So, um.
Alright.
Don't, you don't win either way, you know, you don't win either way.
No, when when this comes forward, let's make sure that we have, that people can say, okay, we have spent this much. To date, because I know the number was initially one. So anyways, we don't have to do this right now, but whenever it comes forward, we need the whole picture.
Yeah, well, I have built working, you know, working the numbers as far as where we are. And then given the fact that we have COVID and we were a year or more past the bid from the original work, right? So the numbers, you know, material costs are escalated, labor costs have escalated, everything's different than the initial bid. I can't hold him to his original bid because I'm a year plus past, past the bidding. I can hold for ninety days. I can't hold it further. Um, so there there's a lot, there's a, there's a couple of moving parts in there. Um, associated with it. So we've got, you've got, you know, we'll we'll have more information as we before February, you know, and hopefully there'll be. More chatter as to what the overall plan is for Waviney. So you'll see that as well. Whether it's of the day or, you know, on the same day that we present or for a different day, but.
Well, thank you for sitting on the hot seat because you don't deserve it.
I'm all good. It's okay.
Right, yeah.
The uh, no, I, they they've done, I've been in involved in majority of the conversations and and. Both entities are excellent and, you know, and I, and I'm actually excited about the playoffs. I think it'll be. What they're proposing to do, I think will be really, really cool. And there's actually a good amount of revenue coming back to the town from. Uh, in 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 regards to rent. So I think it's a win-win at that point in time.
And uh. We are all looking forward to hearing all.
I think, you know, I, I, yeah, I can only tell you as much as Kevin would tell you, and it's pretty much, it's probably what Kevin would tell you, right? So I can't tell you more.
I know, but it's exciting. What little we've we've breached, it's.
I think it's, yeah, I I was, when I met them the first time, I was like, ooh, this one, I gotta listen to this one. This one's a viable entity.
Yeah.
And uh, subsequent meetings with them, it's been excellent. So I I think it'll be good. Any other questions on buildings? We're approaching like the, we're gonna approach a three hour mark. So I'm trying to. The uh, so the highway is a five oh eight uh, down from six oh five. Um, asking for a large truck. We have thirteen of them. We try to replace one every fifteen years. Uh, this one is a two thousand and four unit. It's our, our estimation that it's fought over four hundred snowstorms. Um, got seventy five thousand miles on it and it necessarily needs to be replaced at this point in time. Um, it's, she served her purpose. The uh, the next is a low boy seventy eight thousand uh, dollars. It's uh, we try to replace those every ten years. This is a twelve year old unit. It's fought about two hundred snowstorms and it's got around seventy, seventy five thousand miles as well. The loader is a two thousand and four unit, so it's seventeen years old. Uh, and uh, it's got a, its hours are increasing. So the number, the time you get above ten thousand hours on a big machine is the time when you start thinking about getting rid of it. It's got eleven thousand six hundred hours on it so far. And uh, it needs to be replaced. The um, our equipment refurbishing is probably our best line item. This allows us to keep our trucks longer and our equipment longer. Twenty five thousand dollars is probably our best initiative. And then we have a pavement hot box at twenty thousand dollars. And what this allows us to do is. Go to the, go to the plant, get a large amount of asphalt and keep it hot throughout the day and then keep it hot overnight. And then during the winter time, we can actually put. Asphalt into it, heat it up overnight. And in the morning, we actually have hot mix instead of cold mix to fix puddles, things like that. So this will pay for itself just in timeframe alone from lost time waiting for asphalt from the plant. Or having to drive to the plant and back to get it. So I would imagine in one year, two years' time, it pays for itself. The transfer station is easy. It's a sixty seven thousand dollar request. Uh, it's for the replacement of landfill mower. We bought one back when we kept the landfill twenty one years ago. It's a specialized unit that can handle and manage the s- the side slopes that are there, the steep side slopes that are there. And uh, necessarily needs to be replaced. Um, it's since it's twenty one years old. Uh, the next on the parks maintenance side, parks equipment is a relatively low request, a little bit up from last year. Same exact thing, we're replacing a low boy, same exact mileage, same exact timeframe as far as it goes with uh. With the number so sort of they fought, we're replacing one of our utility carts as a four season unit whereby it might have a. Might have a sprayer on the back of it during the summer or a something to irrigate. And uh, water plants and things like that. And then during this, during the winter, it's uh, spreading salt. Um, and then the off seasons, it's, in the other seasons, it's working on on field maintenance. We have a seventy two inch mower. This is a replacement of a twenty one year old unit. Sixty two thousand dollars, a ride on mower. It's a replacement of a unit that's past its useful life. I think it's eleven years old. Try to get rid of them at the eight to nine year mark for eleven thousand five hundred. We have two trailers to be replaced. Both of them are fifteen years old, for fourteen thousand dollars, leaf box and vacuum. The leaf box is twenty years old, the vacuum's twelve years old. Those need to be replaced. And then we have an athletic field mower. A sixteen foot athletic field mower. The unfortunate thing on this one is if we bought it two years ago, it was ninety thousand dollars. Because of diesel emission changes and uh, the price of steel, it's now a hundred and thirty seven thousand. And it's not gonna go down. It'll stay at this number. And then we have a thirty two thousand dollars for an infield machine. This is to take care of a baseball field. Um, room, the uh, the interior of the baseball fields, both softball and baseball. So that that kind of runs through equipment. The uh, on the cap- capital side, it's much different story. Um, two point two seven million dollar request. Um, now granted, our request last year was around one point three million, but we deferred four hundred and fifty five thousand dollars from last year to this year. And that was for the playground of Waviney Park. That's a replacement of the existing playground and putting in a children's playground uh, adjacent to it. We have two hundred twenty thousand dollars to rebuild the clay tennis courts at Meat Park. Uh, they're thirty one years old and need to be replaced or need to be rebuilt. We have four hundred fifty thousand dollars for Dunning Stadium. Now that we're responsible for Dunning Stadium, we're responsible for all of it. So the maintenance and the capital costs. Uh, those are, these are lights that were put in originally, um, back during. Twenty one years ago or so, uh, back when checks were written to pay for the lights themselves. Now we're looking to pay for ourselves, change over to LED, redo the towers. Uh, and then we've got our other small phases here and there, some other, other small work. And then we've got, um, that number for a hundred and twelve for Bristow should be a hundred and five. You have three hundred thousand for the NCAF and two hundred and fifty thousand for the conservancy. There's about eighteen separate locations of concern that are, that are in this capital request. That's, you know, that's where we stand. Some of them, it's about five or six that were taken over from recreation. They were brought over to us this past year, the Meat Park tennis lights, court lights at fifty five thousand. Some repairs at the Colinade for five thousand, some some trails in and around Meat Park for twelve thousand. Those were all taken over from recreation. So they were out of the recreation budget, no parks made, where probably they should be. Any questions?
Tiger, why is the playground so expensive? And we have a lot of playgrounds. I mean, it's, that's like a half a million bucks for a playground.
Well, it's two. It's not just one. It's the athletic complex that was put in originally, that was put in by donor funds. If you remember, there was a donation that was raised, uh, um. The all out for autism runs that were made, that that raised funds for an adult fitness area. That adult fitness area is being replaced with a port in place surface because right now it's uh, but um, wood chips. Cause right now it's uh, but um, wood chips and it should really be a port-in-place surface for safety. And then subsequent to that, in our largest park, we don't have a playground for children. So the children wind up going to the adult fitness area. And then getting injured. We've had that happen several times. And necessarily they shouldn't be on that, that equipment. They should have their own equipment or their own place to play while their siblings are out. Playing softball or soccer, baseball, what have you. So the thought is, so you know, we don't have a playground in our largest park. So it was brought to our attention that we should look for it, Park and Rec endorsed it. They wanted to see it go forward. And that's where we're at. So it's not really one playground. It's really a playground and an adult fitness area combined. They just have, they'll be side by side. They'll be separated, but they'll be side by side. Um, so the, the amount of work is about four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Last year we deferred it. Yeah, it's, it's not to say that it can't be deferred again. It's just a question of, you know. It was, it was, it was determined to be a need by the Park and Rec Commission and you necessarily need to bring it forward at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you as a mom of young kids, either the adult exercise thing needs to come out and there'd be nothing there. Or it needs to be more kid-friendly. I mean, my kids just go there because they think it's a playground, right? I have a nine-year-old and a five-year-old, so that they're like, that's the playground. And they go play there. And I'm always like, oh. Um, I, I would frankly prefer there was no playground at Waviney because I like to go there with them and make them walk and play with the dog and stuff. But if there's gonna be some structure there, right? It should be kid-friendly because kids just are. It's a magnet for them, right? So it needs to be safe and um, appropriate, I think, for them because they just go there. From my personal experience.
That's, that's been our problem. We can't keep them out and they necessarily shouldn't be in there. The, the, the equipment is not sized for them. It's sized for an adult.
Correct.
Tiger, maybe it should be fenced in area with a gate. With a sign.
They'll still go, I mean.
Yeah, I, we can try, you know, I, but I, I think that it's still, it comes down to the point of, you know. We don't have a playground for kids in Waviney, right? So, you know, we have a playground in me, you know, I got a playground in Dixon, but in our largest park, we don't have a playground. Like, yeah, the, the need was brought to us, you know, we said, okay, you know.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I guess, you know, and then at that point in time, would we separate them and sequester them? Yeah, at that point, I might not necessarily, you know, we can necessarily fence off the adult fitness area, right? And have the children's play area be open. And then the kids will go to the play area, right?
Right.
The only problem that we have is we gotta make sure that they don't run off back out onto the road in the back, right? That's the only other aspect that we would have a concern with. Is someone, you know, would leave the playground area and, and now that we're asking them to go to that area, right? We, we can't, that's, we gotta sequester them there. We can't allow them to then run through the, through the trees and then onto the road, right? So.
Correct. So maybe you fenced them both.
Probably. And that is our plan at present, but you know, it's unfortunate because, you know, just fencing is fencing, right?
Yeah.
But yeah, but in essence, yes. But it's, it's literally, you know, it's a request. It was, you know, the Park and Rec endorsed it, therefore we have to bring it forward, you know.
Is there anything, have, have we thought about approaching like the, the Friends of Meat Park Playground to see if there's any appetite? For a public-private partnership? Because they did a great job with the Meat Park Playground.
She was looking at, yeah, she was looking at doing some additional amenities at Meat Park.
Okay.
Uh, at the time, they, they, we, we put pillars in, right? So they wanna put in a nice, nice arch for the walkway. That was kind of their next.
Okay.
And that forward. I, I even approached Monica about it, um, for Allison, about, you know, the aspect of raising funds here, but. You know, it, it's an idea. I just, I don't, you know, there, there isn't a. There isn't like, there was, there was a champion group there, right? So it was a champion group, moms that said, we want this and we need it.
Yeah.
I don't have per se a champion for this playground.
Right, no, I hear you, I hear you.
Unfortunately, it would be nicer if I did, but I don't.
Yeah. I mean, they're friends of mine. I'm happy just to raise the question to see if there's even.
If there's an appetite, you know, the, you know, you throw it out on Facebook, you know, the mom's page and see, you know. In essence, you know, there, there, there really does need to be a champion. There has to be, you know.
Oh, yeah, it's a lot of work.
You know, it's a lot of money. And uh, and to Amy's point, you know, the um. The residents need to say, yes, this is what we want, right? You know.
Yeah. I mean, it's expensive, but I do think, I, just as a mom of young kids, I think that that exercise thing is an accident waiting to happen, to be frank.
We've had, we've had children injured on it, right? Some, you know, necessarily one girl injured her finger, which was really bad. Could have been really, really bad, right?
Yeah.
And um, you know, it wound up being, you know, a lesser injury, but. The thought is that if she had gotten it caught in the right way, she would have lost the finger, right? So that's not.
Oh my god. Yeah, I, it's just, it's cause kids are just, it's not, it's not made for them.
No, no, exactly. So, yeah, but that's.
Yeah, what, what I'm hearing from Hillary is that uh, it could be the co-location would be a challenge no matter what. So maybe. Like a champion and a game plan, you know, so.
Well, we, we have a game, but we did look at other locations and.
But they're still gonna find it. Kids, kids are clever. They're gonna find the other one and go hang out there too.
Possibly, yeah. I mean, you know, they do a pretty good job at me to sequestering the young ones from the, from the larger playground, you know, that there's two playgrounds. There's a toddler area or your young child area and then adult area. And, and it seems to be sequestered pretty well. Um, whereby, you know, the young kids stay in one location and the older kids go to the other, but. Yeah, it's a, like I said, it's, it's um, we looked at putting it in other places, but they're all. They were all unsatisfactory, I guess would be the best description. Looked to put it and try to put it down by the pool. There's no real location to try to put it down by the pool. Over by the dog park, you know, we said, okay, where could we move it, right? You know, even in back at the community center and that necessarily doesn't work. If they're gonna renovate the baseball field, it doesn't work. And um, you know, and then you're kind of taking it away from where the, the hub. Of the activities are, right? The hub of the activities are right there at that parking lot. That's where the playground should be. That's, so we, we came back to that location because we were, we were sent to the drawing board, went around and came back to where we were originally.
Yeah.
So.
Tiger, just a question, um, the, the, the people who raised the money for the need part did such a beautiful job. Everything that's in it is just like perfect. Is this going to be exactly the same thing or is it?
Yeah, the, the designs were actually run through the town, right? And then we took, we, we got designs and then ran it to um, ran it through the. Uh, Friends of Meat Park Playground. So it was a kind of a group effort, but the designs came from the designer itself. And then we tweaked the design. So yeah. Be very similar because we'll go back to the same people again to, to ask them for their help. You know, as far as for the design work. And I would imagine that'll be very similar in design to what's at need.
And meat is, is well-used. From what I understand, it's extremely well-used.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I don't know. I just wonder, I mean, how many of these we need in, in duplication? But you know, it's, it's worth the conversation, certainly.
Right, you know, like I said, we deferred it one year. I'm not saying to defer it again. You know, the, it, it is what it is, right? We, you know. Part of my job is to show you where there's a need and then your job is to tell me I can't afford it, right?
Hey, Tiger, two quick questions. Can, can you just remind us the uh, the NCAF, the, the foundation and the three hundred thousand? What was that? Um, was that something that was put into some sort of master plan and we knew to expect this? Or is this relatively new? I, I just don't have a recollection of what that refers to.
Yeah, I, it, it started last year. I put in three hundred thousand dollars as the marker heading out in the all five, you know, in the five-year plan, three hundred, three hundred, three hundred, three hundred. And it was basically to um, as a marker to show that the, the, the NCF is a little bit behind in, in their planning, but. They were necessarily gonna be coming out with a large project. And then they'd be looking for the town to help fund it instead of hitting it in the off-cycle. Right? And then trying to then come back forward and get, and you know, this was to say, we're gonna try to help fund, you know, our portion of. Their projects going forward. And I needed a, I needed a place marker in, you know, with three hundred thousand dollars because. Three hundred thousand dollars was necessarily one-third of a million, right? So I felt that, you know, if we're at thirty percent or, you know, one-third of, of the overall cost. It's a pretty good place, a pretty good. Um, niche for the town to be in, to be perfectly honest with you, right? So, and I said, well, we'll just do three hundred per year because we're trying to. Not spike the, you know, the capital. We always try to keep it normalized and relatively flat, right? So that was the reason for this. And the thought is that while it's allocated, it's, it's not given, okay? We were by, they have to come forward with a project that the town says, yes, we like. And we're willing to fund, right? And here, here we have money set aside to fund it, right? We've already put aside. This money, that's really, that's really the thought process. And they have a plan to redo the stadium. Um, the press box and the concession area all up on top there and redo it with a really state-of-the-art. Press box with video and um, to be able to live stream it. They've been live streaming the games now. That hour has been really well-received. And then to do a concession stand that's actually double-sided, right? So with bathrooms. So you could actually access it from the turf fields across this parking lot, right? Which it's an excellent plan. So that's really, that's really, I think, their first phase. And I think the NCAF is coming tomorrow to talk to the, the, the town council. On their plans, Mike, Michael mentioned it. I think he talked to you guys.
Yeah, he, he was kind of talking about how well things have been going and, you know, relatively speaking. Balances were in the turf replacement fund, the other project funds and that kind of stuff. But I don't, I just don't remember.
Got a broad brush, yeah, he broad brushed the plan because we're still, right now, we're in the survey phase of it.
Yeah, so it might not be this fiscal year that they can actually bring forward an actual project.
Right, but I didn't wanna come to you and say, I need a million, you know, I'm trying to, you know, like I said, we're trying to. We're trying to normalize it, right? If there's no other way.
I, I was just trying to rationalize because, you know, we, we have this half million dollars for the Dunning Stadium lights as well. And you, you know, you have to just sit there and think to ourselves. How big a bite do we wanna take on all those other things? You have all this other stuff competing for.
I don't disagree, you know, and, and the problem is that we started this three hundred, three hundred, and then we were given the maintenance of Dunning. And then. Like, oh, well, we're gonna do the lights, right? But yeah, I, I'm looking at the exact same thing because I'm not looking at three hundred. I'm looking at seven fifty, right? I'm like, wow.
Right.
It's been at seven fifty at Dunning this year, right now, right? So that, you know, that's really where I was at.
Um, no, I, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, and the, it's the exact same thing for the conservancy, right? So we're looking at setting aside two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars towards a future project that they have. But the, the money sits on the town side. And then if we approve the project that they wanna go forward with as part of their master plan, then we say, okay, fine, we'll fund. Here's our, here's our portion.
So, so, so does this, does this conservancy set aside, is this in response to the presentation that they brought to the Board of Finance?
Yes.
Well, it was, it was actually in response to last, last year, the, last year, the Board of Finance said, when I. Finance, they said.
Okay, alright.
You have any money for the conservancy? I said, well, they've never asked, right? And then, then they asked, right? So then basically, that's what came forward with this. So when I had the NCF in there, I, I forgot who asked me on the Board of Finance, but they asked me, what about the conservancy? And I said, well, they've never asked for money. And then the conservancy came back and said, listen, we'd like some money. So I said, okay. So we, we settled on the two-fifty number. Could that be three hundred? Yeah, it started at three hundred, to be honest with you. It got dropped to two-fifty. And this sits on our side until they, until we approve a project. And then, then we've, you know, provide the funds. We, the town, the DPW manages the project anyway. So we, we take in the. The conservative funds and do the project itself. So um, it's, it's very similar. To the exact same thing. It's not like we're gonna, gonna give them two-hundred-and-fifty and they put two-hundred-and-fifty in their bank account. We keep two-hundred-and-fifty on our side. When there's a, when there's an appropriate project that we want to participate in, then we say, yes, we've already got money set aside for it. And it helps them, from their aspect, it helps them because they say the town's got skin in the game. The town's giving us two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars towards this project. Or if they're gonna use two years allotment, five hundred thousand dollars towards this project. Helps them solicit donors. They understand that they've already got seed money and then they, you know, then they can go forward. And, you know, gives them a little bit, brings them closer to their goal. And uh, and, and helps other contributors see the light. It's really what each one of them has said and separately, not even in the same room. And not even within the same month. It actually said, it's Mike Benevento when the conservancy have said the exact same things, saying that town's got a skin in the game. And once you have skin in the game, then other donations follow. That's, that's the long and the short of it. It just, it just, you know, on my aspect, I look at it, you know, I, I got seven hundred thousand dollars on projects. That, that are necessarily not mine, you know, you know, I got, I got a hundred thousand dollars from the sanctuary, I got three hundred for the NCF, I got two-fifty from. Conservancy, I'm at, I'm at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's, those aren't, you know, those are, those weren't our initiatives. You know, it's fine. Don't get me wrong. It's perfectly fine. It's just, just, you know, you know, our fear all along has always been that. When we add these in, then you start looking at them and then you cut some of our stuff up and keep theirs, right? So that we're stuck, we don't get monies that we need and then the others get funded.
And that. Tiger, we would never do that to you.
I'll just, you know. Prior Board of Finances, you know, way back, used to just say.
Way back.
You're at two hundred, figure it out, you know, and that was it, right? That's, that's the.
Right.
From the taxpayer's side of it though, the taxpayers could say, why are we the taxpayers paying, you know, for the. Special, specials, uh, sports fields or plantings at the park. And I mean, you know, because that's. You know, we hear the other side of it.
I, I, yeah, I don't disagree. I, I can just tell you, you know, that, that a lot, a lot of what they're talking about on the NCF side is, it's a draw, right?
I get it. I get it.
And uh, same thing with, you know, just beautifying the park, you know, the um, you know, waving happens, you know, it's unfortunate. It's Fairfield's park, you know, Fairfield County's park. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and to do these investments in this public-private arena, it's way more palatable if we can set aside money, like you're saying. To uh, Tiger, to normalize it. And, you know, we can just, it can be a segregated part of the general fund, which does not get released to the project gets approved. Right? And then shows the equal matching.
Yeah, right, exactly. And that's what, that's basically what we told them. So listen, that money's on our side, right? And then, you know, when we have a viable project, then we will. Release our side. We still manage it, but we release our monies, but we, we won't release until we have a viable project that's town-approved, right? You know, and that, um, so yes, it, and like you said, and it also, it helps them too because, you know, our, our budget process is kind of lumpy. You know, so when they come forward with a project, they get momentum, they wanna go, right? They can't wait for the town to then say, oh, wait a minute, I, I gotta go. Through three boards, three months, get the money. They might, you know, it gets a little bit harder for them. So that, for them to know that they've got cash in pocket. If they have an approved project, it's, it helps them out, I, you know.
I mean, all, all, all of that is true. And I, and I realize that particularly for some of these larger numbers or for some of these projects. That can't be started and completed within the same fiscal year. It gets a little bit more challenging. But the, the other side of it, for those of us that sit on this side is, you know, there's an inherent discipline in making them prioritize. Which, which projects they want and bringing in presenting those, right? Now, I, I get it, you know, we're, we're setting aside money, but it's not actually going to be spent. Until there's sort of a, you know, when, as and if there is a project that's been approved. And so, but I, you know. There's a little bit of a challenge of saying to your average taxpayer, oh yeah, you know, this isn't the budget. We're gonna raise it through taxation. We haven't really spent it yet, you know, we have to wait for something. You know, it kind of is, you know, the, the explanation kind of falls a little flat, but. Whatever, I, I, I get the point and there's probably more discussions to be had on both sides, but I, I see those numbers as placeholders as we go through the process.
That's, that's basically it. You know, I mean, you know, cause it might come forward that, who, who's to say? They might come forward with the greatest projects and sliced bread. And say, we need five hundred, not three hundred, you know, and, and that could very well happen, you know, so it's the exact same thing. So the uh, I, I just look at us. It gives them incentive, incentivizes them. It shows that the town is, you know, involved. And that should hopefully incentivize some of the contributors.
Yep.
Any other questions on parks? We good?
Good.
All right, the uh, the nature center, just to show you the work that we're doing there, we have, I said the two-hundred-thousand-dollar renovation. We have sixty thousand dollars to replace the visitor's center roof. I've got ten thousand dollars of painting and repairs to do with the herb cottage and the shed. That's up near the, that's uh, where all the, the, the greenhouses work, but all the, the community gardens are. Cider house needs a, a small amount of roof repairs. There's a, there's a hole in the roof, I need five thousand dollars for that. And then the rock house needs a roof replacement of twenty thousand. So they're all, we're all in all planned. They're all a part of um, our facility dude plan for. Number of years, we're just bringing them forward. But all in, it's two ninety-five. Last year was forty-six thousand. We replaced two furnaces. Both of them were twenty-three years old.
Tiger, the rock house roof replacement, twenty thousand for that little shed?
Exactly.
Yes, eighteen thousand plus contingency. I bet, we've asked two separate contractors. That's the number. Yeah. It's, it's a, well, if you keep with the, 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 the existing materials, yeah. So, you know, the materials are, are a little bit, you know. So, yeah, it's, it's an eighteen. I asked, like I said, we asked for two separate quotes, eighteen thousand dollars with the quote. We had a little contingency rounded up. So that's where we're at. And it needs to be replaced, it's at that point where it needs.
Oh, I know, I know it needs to be replaced, but I think that number is outrageous.
I can only, I can only go by with the, you know, maybe the bid number coming in will be much better, but I can only, you know, when we go out and ask for guys to bid on our projects and win our projects, we ask them for a number, you know, not, you know, they give us, you know, we ask for a ballpark number so we can have budgetary number, nothing that we're gonna hold them to. That's, this is the number they came back.
Yeah, the, the Audubon renovation, I just, it needs to be more familiar with it and what the purpose of it is. And I know it's talking about providing additional uh, programming for twos and threes, I believe. And it's just one of these, it's one of these interesting balances, like this is a park. The nature center uses all the buildings, we have to keep them up and then they run, and I love the nature center, like my kids, whether it's not anything against nature center. But it's one of those interesting things because then the nature center is gonna charge tuition and stuff like that to expand their programming into this building. I, I just, in other, you know, other um, nursery schools don't have the same um, position, they're not subsidized the same way, you know, I don't know, I just, I, I would need to learn more about this one, but I think I need to kind of.
We need to reach out to Bill Flynn, but we're not necessarily fitting it out for, you know, we're not doing the interior fit out for them, let's put it that way, we're not gonna renovate it all and interior fit out for what they need to do. This is the work that we need to do to maintain, you know, to basically save the structure and, and then uh, um, you know, rebuild it.
Right, it's, it's an ongoing challenge, we have of leasing these buildings to people who get the hundred percent use of it and how you balance it, yeah.
Well, Amy, it's the same thing with the powerhouse, the carriage barn and all the other.
I know, I agree, I agree, it's a challenge, I'm saying it's a challenge, how to figure it out.
Yes, you know, but I, you know, the, basically what we have is I've got a building that I've got to maintain, right? And now I've got a use, which is what we've been asking for, right? So I'm happy that I have somebody who wants to use it and what they want to use it for is actually a need in the community. I'm okay, I'm kind of, you know, I'm taking off a couple of boxes there as far as it goes, as far as what I consider requirements, right? Then it comes down to, oh, well, you know, yeah, they use it for programming and they make money off of it, right? But that necessarily, they're a not-for-profit, so it doesn't necessarily leave the, you know, the confines of the town. But, you know, it's a question for them, you know, to ask.
But in comparison, Tiger, the, the nature center serves a larger portion of the population than let's say schoolhouse apartments.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, Christina, don't get me wrong, I think it's excellent, I, I love the fact that we have a nature center. I love it, you know, I think it's fantastic for the town. I just, you know, the, like you said, you know, we have the daycare facility at the schoolhouse, right? We do landlord tenant things there, right? They do their tenant things, we do our landlord things, but they're also, you know, um, they're paying rent, right? So other places are not, the nature center by its, by its own, you know, by the, by its adoption, doesn't pay us anything. They just manage with, from within, right? So it's, 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 it, yeah, it's a conundrum, yeah, like you said, the powerhouse and the carriage barn are the exact same thing. I'm very happy that I've got tenants in those two buildings because I would hate to lose those buildings, you know? But by the same token, they're, they're, they're free, you know? Which makes that kind of interesting as well, you know? So I guess it's, it's, it's a balancing out the two, you know? I, in my personal opinion, I'd rather have people in the buildings utilizing the buildings than having them just vacant with, with nothing going on. Especially if it's gonna serve a need to the community, right?
Totally agree.
So that's really where I'm at, you know? It's hard, uh, don't get me wrong, it's not, not something that we don't wrestle with, you know, because I actually have to go and ask for the money, you know? So it makes it harder, you know, and then it, then it winds up being tied up against other projects that I have elsewhere that are equal importance, you know, so. Um, but that's, like I said, all, this two hundred and ninety-five is included, it's not, you know, double dipped, it's included in the other side. I just separated out so everyone can see exactly what we do with the nature. But it's more of an informational slide. Then the last one is the sewer. Is at one point one nine seven million. Um, basically what this is, is we uh, we took a project that was gonna be a, a two-year project and combined it into one based upon the, the, where we at, where we are at in the, the overall age of the, of the facility and the necessary, looking at um, availability of parts and labor and what the cost would be escalating forward. So our U V replacement, we're actually gonna come forward this year with an engineering design phase and then a procurement phase, right? So six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the procurement and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the design. And then I went to the engineer and said, how long is it gonna take you to design this? And he says, it's gonna take me about four months. I said, okay, can we do all of the work in one calendar year? Because the unit itself is twenty-one years old, it's difficult to get parts for it. If it fails, we're in, we're in a conundrum because that's our final, that's our post-treatment phase, is a U V um, treatment, right? So we need the U V to finalize our treatment stream as, as a waste leaves the plant. And then they said that, that we could, in essence, do it all in one year. And then we would get a, we would lessen the concern over lack of parts, lack of labor availability, lack of the, lack of the machinery, you know, the replacement itself. So the fact was that we felt that we needed to kind of condense the timeframe down. So this would have been separated over two years and we combined it into one, that's why the numbers jumped a little bit. But overall, we have eighty thousand dollars from a clarifier replacement, that's clarifier number two. Last year, you, you funded clarifier number one. Um, our control building fuel tank, we're now on gas, it's an underground tank, we need to remove the tank and, and repair the area. It's sitting underneath the pavement. And then our generator fuel tank, our generator fuel tank is an underground tank at present, it's an underground storage tank, it's twenty-one years old. Tanks of that age gotta come up out of the ground and we don't want to put one back in the ground. It's just, you know, necessarily evil, so we need to replace that, that's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand and then our fence is twenty years old. And uh, it needs to be replaced, we, we uh, we gauge every windstorm by how many panels fall over and it's getting to the point where we can't replace them anymore. So that's, and the, the nature of the beast of this is this whole one point two million dollars will be paid for out of the major maintenance reserve that we have at the plant. So it won't actually be affected by the sewer use fees. You know, the people actually paying for the sewer won't see it because we already have enough money in our major maintenance reserve to cover the cost. And, and uh, then we'll just, you know, start to resupply that money from our septic fees and, and, and other fees associated with the plant. So we'll uh, we'll, we'll see that grow back again. Right now, I think we have like three million dollars in the account. And that's after taking off all of our subsequent, your, our previous year's work. We've got still like three million dollars and then we'll just, and this is the reason why we, we set aside this major maintenance reserve was to have it so that we wouldn't see, we would be able to do this, these large replacements and not affect the uh, the, these, the sewer user, the taxpayer at all.
But there are no plans in expanding it, are there?
No, we don't, uh, we got our, we got our permit just this past year. Uh, we're making permit on everything that we need to make permit on. The um, you know, that we still have, we're not underneath the zinc and phosphorus mandate anymore, we're, we're making the permit. They revised their levels, doesn't mean that they might not come back in five years and tell us, but there's no, there's no technology out there for us to take care of. So we actually, that marker of an expansion that we had out there, that marker of ten million to twenty million dollars that, you know, it was a nebulous number, we actually removed that from our budget sheet because right now we're making permit and there's no reason to, to assume that that'll change going forward. So and, and we don't necessarily see a large expansion of the system. You know, we, we do know of some developments that are out there, but we don't think that those are gonna top us out.
Where are we in terms of capacity? Are we at seventy, eighty percent?
We don't, we don't calculate it by that, we just tell you that, that the capacity is adequate, you know, we, we have enough, we have enough free board um, to, to handle, we have enough free board to add in Kelly Green and sell a place and uh, Orchard Lane, if we had to, we, we have enough capacity for that. And uh, we have enough capacity probably for, for some additional um, increases as well. What we are doing right now is we're in, in the middle of what's called an I N I study, an infiltration and inflow study, um, that was funded last year. That we'll be looking at basically areas of, well, infiltration is when rainwater comes in, stormwater comes into our piping system because our piping system is older, right? It comes down to relining certain pipes who are having problems. Um, necessarily rebuilding some manhole, uh, cement holes or coating inside the manholes. And then looking at what's called inflow, which is um, some pumps are connected to your sewer system when they should be connected to the drainage system, right? So your sump pump inside your house, if you put it inside your sewer line, we're treating clean water necessarily, right? It's what groundwater that came up into your house, you pump it out, you put it into your sanitary sewer line, we're having to do it, you know, take care of that. The last storm that we had, the major storm that we had, uh, we normally run it about eight hundred thousand to a million gallons a day, plants designed for a little bit above that. And uh, we topped out at seven million gallons, you know? So we were right at the limit for the plant, if it rained for twenty more minutes, we were gonna be in trouble. So we're looking at the fact that we've got to go in and take care of, and that's all infiltration and inflow, majority of it is inflow, right? Because our pipes are pretty good, but majority of it is basically everyone's sump pump kicked on and started sending water to us. Just water, you know, stormwater to us, but we've got to necessarily find out who, where it is, who it is, and then ask them to connect properly, you know, and help them to connect properly. That's really.
And so how do you do that?
But right now, we put in flow meters inside of, we're putting flow meters in, in a series of manholes throughout town, right, to take a look at exactly what's our current flow and then what happens during rain. And then you start to then narrow it down to your, your areas of focus. You can start to sequester the town off and see exactly areas. You can do what Darian is doing and, and smoke test, we don't necessarily want to smoke test right now. Smoke testing is they basically put smoke through the pipe, right? And if you have an illicit connection, it'll come out through your, you'll see it come out of the house, okay? So it'll come out of your roof, out of your sewer vent, out of your roof, because you have an illicit connection. So once, and we'll know that, and, and basically, so you walk down the street, you go, that one, that one, that one, we don't want to put anyone on the spot. So we're gonna try to do it a little differently.
But isn't that, isn't that a zoning issue that, that the P and C has to put in some regulations when they put in sump pumps?
The uh, well, yes and no, I mean, you know, in essence, you're always asking, it's, I think it's more uh, um, an education and outreach, right? Whereby you're educating the population as to where this, where that stormwater, that, that, that sump pump should be connected. The majority of people don't know what happens, you know, they put it into their, they'll put it into their washer line, right? You know, and then they don't know that that washer line goes to the plant and we're actually treating that water. They, they don't know anything about that, right? They just know that the water is out of their house. So, you know, so in essence, it's more of an education, that's really what comes down to. We do this study, we find out the areas of concern, we start to educate the population, knock on doors, ask people, you know? The problem we have is we don't actually watch the connection and see that the connection's made properly. We just tell the people to do it, they'll connect it properly and then go back to the other way, right? So we have to make sure that it's done. I, I don't know if P and C can help with that, that portion, that'll be for our engineer to tell us if there's certain things that can be, you know, put into the code, say yes, you know, these are the things that gotta be built along with it. Yeah, so it's, it's a process, but our feeling is that every single house that we take offline is one house that we get to put back online, right? So you, we take a house offline, that's, that's a, that's has an inflow problem, right? Where they're, you know, and we could connect somebody that might not, might need sanitary service, right? One and the other, right? It's really not a one for one, but in essence, that's what we're looking to do, we're, we're looking to gain back some capacity in these storms. And then utilize that for, for other users that might necessarily need the system because their sanitary system is uh, no longer functioning. Any other questions or we're at the three hour mark, so I figure.
Yeah, I think that it's good.
Throw us getting a little sore, so I'm, I'm, I'm good, you know, I had an hour and a half this morning, I had three hours. It's all good, well, it's fresh in my head, so it's all good, yeah, I didn't have to cover anything. The um, yeah, so the um, that's a, it's, we're at the end, so we're basically, we're at the thank you slide, pretty much.
Tiger, you're awesome, you're awesome, so there, so there.
Thank you, if you have any questions or, you know, whatever, just shoot, shoot them out, because I'd rather have them, I'd rather answer them or know of them before we get to the, you know, the board of finance and the town council, I'd like to, you know, that way I can answer them outright and make sure that everybody's satisfied. But if there's something or, you know.
The only thing I would recommend, Tiger, is like, when you start off, you should let everyone know we have this many roads, this many buildings, this many square feet, you know, and this many acres of park. I mean, you should let people know how much you, you, you're covering, it's enormous.
Yeah, I, I take, you know, I, I, I appreciate that, because like, you know, necessarily take it for granted, right? That people know, right?
They don't.
To be honest, I, I, you know, I, I, I know that this year I'm gonna have to, excuse me, educate the, the town council a little bit more because they're, you know, Mark and Hillary got to listen today, but they only got a portion of the payment management program, right? They didn't listen to the actual overall what we do, right? So I've got to go back to the drawing board a little with them, just to show them what the whole program's about. But you are right, you know, today, you know, I, I did a little bit more of a broader brush on, you know, that we have fifty-eight, you know, we're, we're the largest department, you know, second at a board of ad, right? So, you know, um, and then at that point in time, I could, you know, roll off the list of things that we are responsible for, just to let people know. Um, you know, set the tone, but the um, you know, I was in front of the board of selectmen and, you know, they, they kind of know, right? But you know.
Yeah, but, but everybody doesn't, and you know, it's just the fact that, you know, I think we, our parkland is, it's like, our numbers are multiples with Darian. As everyone compares us to Darian, you have, I think it's one and a half times the rows, we have double the parklands, the number of buildings in the park. I mean, and, and that's what you're responsible for keeping up, you know? So I, I think that would help people, especially in the context when you, you're gonna need more money this year. So, and it's justified, but just, you know, brag a little bit about what you do, so people know where we're spending the money, that's my.
Yeah, I did put out a, I, I put out a, I have this mensory for this very large tabulation of our buildings and every structure that we have. So even more so than what you guys did, and everything about every structure. So that I can then say, okay, this is exactly what we've got and we're, I'm, I'm building that, that, that database of it. So for these questions, exactly these, right? You know, and how many actual pieces of rolling stock do I have that I actually have to maintain, right? Because I just don't maintain mine, maintain police and fire and EMS, land use, you know? Get about, you know, other things like that, so I take care of all of those. So I, right now, I got a, you know, tabulation of all of those as well, just so when somebody says, how many pieces of rolling stock do you have? Oh, you know, a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and forty-five, you know, I've got quite a bit that, you know, five, five guys, the mechanics maintain.
Right.
Hey, hey, Tiger, also, you know, professionally speaking, I, I invest in construction material companies, waste disposal, ag chems and aggregate businesses. So I, I really would like you to focus on the fact that inflation is, is a real headwind for you and you know, that should be something that you're, that should be something you're, you're really leading with, along with, and I agree with everything Amy just said, with all of the assets that we have, because the cost to maintain this stuff is really gonna go up. And this is just, you know, some of this may fluctuate, but you know, some on the labor side certainly isn't gonna fluctuate, so really.
Yeah, that's what we're seeing.
I really think you gotta hit that hard, you gotta hit that hard because we, I personally believe we've been underspending. And, and it's gonna, it's eventually gonna catch up to us. And I really think that, you know, it would be to your benefit to kind of lead with that type of, I mean, you don't want to say it like that, but I think we're all thinking the same here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, because well, this was the first year where, I mean, I'm at six point six, so I've been freaking out for a while, right? I'm normally around two, right? And Amy's yelling at me that she's got more.
Six is amazing, I thought you were gonna say fifteen and I would have been impressed with ten.
Yeah, you know, the, it's, it's a, but we, you know, I asked the guys and said, listen, you, you gotta, you know, put down the right number and give me the right number, right? So in, in essence, I, I, you know, I, I think we're, we're taking into consideration that, you know, I mean, I, when, when John told me seed was up forty percent, I was like, what are you talking about? Just grass seed, like, yeah, but you know, when you're, when you're buying in bulk and you're buying tens of thousands of dollars, forty, you know, fifty, forty percent matters, right? So all those, you're right, and, and you know, we, we, I don't even, I don't think we've seen the end of it because construction lags. That's the problem that I have, is construction lags a little bit, so.
And they're, they're still chasing, they're still chasing costs too, so those prices are still gonna come through. I mean, someone was talking about roofing before, roofing costs are, and I, are going through the roof, no pun intended, and um, and they're on allocation, so I really, twenty thousand dollars seems like a lot, but it really isn't. When you, when you lump it all together, it's, people really need to understand this.
Well, we can delve a little deeper.
Yeah, well, I, I don't wanna, we all gotta go, but I just wanted to say that.
No, that's okay.
To, to your, to your point though, Mark, I think Tiger, um, I, I think we really do need to paint the real picture. Um, you always have given a budget where you go to your, you know, subheads and say, tell me exactly what it costs to run the, you know, operations at the level is expected by the town. Um, and try to keep that balance and, and I've always been very comfortable with your budget, that that's, that it's a real budget, it's not padded, it's. That it's a real budget. It's not padded, it's not under, it's really, it's a real budget. But, but everybody has got to understand the dynamics that are at play out there this year. And they are significant. We're all feeling them at home, so why would we, you know, come to your budget presentation? And not think that you're gonna experience it. But to, to kind of outline. The various areas that you have felt it the most and the most dramatically. Really puts in perspective how we evaluate the numbers. You know, and, and everybody's gonna say, okay, we have fifty-six buildings, we probably have fifty-seven now. Um, you know, adding. You know, and um, but there's really no consolidation, so that's what we're gonna be living with going forward. You know.
Yeah, oh, I forgot we bought two twenties, so I'm back to fifty-seven.
Yeah, I know.
Forgot about that one. Yeah, I was a little different, but the, no, I, I, I appreciate that, the um. I, I'll try to, I'll go back to my managers, they, you know. Their numbers came forward, this was what they felt, right? So, and even then, like I said, it's, you know, it's way higher than we've ever been. And, you know, I did look at, I, I went, Mark, to your point, I went to, you know, inflation, I started reading, you know. I read the Times every day and then I saved a couple of articles that were really key saying that, you know, that inflation's, you know, gonna kill it. And I was like, okay. And then we started seeing it in some of our numbers already. And the hard part is I gotta program, I gotta, I gotta broadcast out for eighteen months from today.
Yeah.
Right?
Stick with the Wall Street Journal, it's a little, little better.
I know, but, you know. It's, it's, it's a broad thing, you know, for me that the time to just see. I read, I read the journal too, but, you know, the uh.
Anyway, we, 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 we uh, really respect um, your approach to the budget and, and um. I'm, I'm very comfortable with your, with your numbers.
Well, thank you, the, you know, it, the, the Board of Selectmen seen finds morning, you know, I, he didn't bat an eye, so I was like, okay. A little better off, so we'll see in a.
Right.
In the next, in the next month when we go to Board of Finance, but it will be tweaking them, you know, some of these numbers will tweak a little bit. You know, and if I see something that has to be increased, I'll, I'll increase it.
I'm sure you will.
Uh, but, you know, we'll go from there and then, and if you've got any questions, you know, while we get there, let me know.
Okay.
You know, and then we'll, we'll try to answer the questions that you had, you know, for the next, for the next round. Specifically around use and stuff like that, that'll be good. And then I can give a, I can give an overview of who we are. You know, the boards have changed a little bit, you know, council's definitely changed, so.
Yeah, huge.
Yeah, so that I think, you know, in and of itself, you know, I think it's, I think it's also, and if someone's listening at home, I think it helps too. And they actually see and understand exactly the, the depth and breadth of it, right?
You're the best. Thank you.
Thanks to everybody.